Good evening. This is the caucus and council meeting for March 13, 2024 in the Council of Chambers. The nurse of this meeting, Presided Officer of the Council, the Lady Tejeda wishes to advise the audience that the notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the clerk, in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers. City Hall 260 High Street at 5:30 PM. Right now is 5:34 PM. The council meeting will follow the caucus and the closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I urge the present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Morales.
Present.
Councilwoman Puccio.
Present.
Councilwoman Torres.
Present.
Council President Tejeda.
Present. And today we start with a, um, we have two presentations today. Um, the number one is the Mayoral proclamation to the Asian Order of Hibernians, 75th anniversary. Congratulations. Mayor?
Good evening and thank you, Madam President. Good evening, council members, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor to present this Mayoral proclamation, Charles Velasquez. Come right up. Like to present this proclamation to you. Good. Just gonna sit here and wait everyone could hear me. This is in regards to the 75 year milestone celebration, whereas the city of Perth Amboy celebrates the historical achievements and cultural contributions of significant organizations within our city. And whereas the Asian Order of Hibernians, an esteemed Irish and Irish-American organization originated in 1565 as the defenders in Ireland, safeguarding Roman Catholic clergy and sanctuaries from English oppression. And whereas established in America in 1836, the Asian Order of Hibernians is the oldest Irish Catholic fraternal organization with roots stretching to the coal mining areas of Pennsylvania and streets of New York City. And whereas the Perth Amboy division of the Asian Order of Hibernians was inaugurated in 1948, it has since been a defender of Irish heritage and Roman Catholic values. And whereas the 75th anniversary of the Asian Order of Hibernians in Perth Amboy symbolizes a significant historical milestone, commemorating acknowledgement and celebration for their substantial impact on the social, cultural, and civic fabric of our city. Now therefore, I, Helmin Jai Kaba, Mayor of the City of Perth Amboy, do hereby commemorate the 75th anniversary of the Asian Order of Hibernians in the City of Perth Amboy and extend heartfelt congratulations and appreciation for their longstanding service and dedication to our beautiful city. I encourage all citizens to celebrate this milestone anniversary and pay tribute to the Asian Order of Hibernians for their firm commitment to preserving and enhancing Irish heritage in the City of Perth Amboy. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Wow, 75 years, that's a big deal. Congratulations.
You're good there.
I'd just like to thank the mayor and the city council for this proclamation. It's been a long, we've been around a long time. From my father, my uncles, they all were members. So it means something to all of us that you saw here, plus the other members who can't be with us. I also want to tell you that this Sunday at 11 o'clock, City Hall Circle will be raising the Irish flag. If anybody would like to attend, please come down. The more, the better. It'll be around 11 o'clock. We'll have the Star Spangled Banner and the Irish National Anthem as we raise the flag. I also want to invite everybody down after the flag raising around noon on Sunday, the 17th, to our open house at, at the Hibernian Club, 428 Brace Avenue. We'll have corned beef sandwiches for anybody who would like one. And they're, uh, and they're gratis, they're free. We give them out every year. 75 years ago, they gave out corned beef, corned beef and cabbage dinners, but that's a little too much for us. So corned beef sandwiches, it'll be on Sunday, the 17th around 12 noon. So if you're not doing anything, stop by and celebrate with us. Again, thank you to the city council and the mayor for this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much. A well-deserved celebration for them, these 75 years. It's been, it's a great honor for Perth Amboy to have you in our city. Thank you. And we'll be there on Sunday to celebrate with you. Thank you. And now we go to the second presentation, Ms. Vasquez.
Good evening, Council. This evening, we have a presentation brought to you by a group of volunteer planners. The city, thanks to your approval, applied for and was awarded a technical assistance grant to put together a transit hub study to study the area around the train station. NJTPA, the New Jersey Turnpike Authority, and the Association, New Jersey Association of Planners, or APA, puts, works together to put this grant opportunity together from municipalities to apply. And thankfully, we were awarded. They then put out a call to local planners or to planners from across the state who volunteer their time to research our city, to look at best practices, and to make recommendations to us. And that's what they're here to do this evening. They worked for several months on this plan. We had several stakeholder meetings, and they'll go through where, you know, how we got here and what they recommend in this plan. So at this time, I'd like to call up Mike DiGeronimo, who will present the plan findings to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, too, to the mayor and council for having us.
Get closer to the mic because somehow they would.
There we go. Is that better?
Yes.
All right, thank you. As Tashi mentioned, my name is Mike DiGeronimo. I'm an architect and planner and a volunteer for this, for the transit hub plan that we've put together here today to present to you. This is a planning effort that kind of bridges the gap between the prior planning efforts that the city had undergone over the last 10, 15 years and moving forward into the planning efforts of the future, some of which are underway right now. And so part of our, our charge here is to kind of inform that process and move the planning along using our team's knowledge and expertise and time as volunteers to kind of help develop that, that plan and that, that sort of direction to inform the future of efforts. As Tashi mentioned, this is a joint effort between the New Jersey APA, the Planning Association for the State, and North Jersey Transportation and Planning Authority. And so as part of that, their efforts with their volunteer program, which is called the Community Planning Assistance Program, or CPAP, and New Jersey TPA's Transit Hub program, our team was assembled to, to help do a deep dive on the information and make recommendations. And part of our charge, and some of it I'll describe later, was some outreach we did to kind of right-size and check some of this prior work to make sure it's relevant for today and kind of inform the planning process moving forward. So as I mentioned, we're all volunteers. We took our time and expertise and we're using it to kind of apply to inform the more detailed planning that we've got. Some of our team members are here. So Tom, who heads up the CPAP program, is here. Jeff Burnick with NJTPA, the Transit Hub program is there, and then some of our volunteers are here, and Rose. We're all integral in this, in this team effort, and we had a number of other teams. We had a few Perth Amboy locals, which was great to have that inside knowledge to help us inform the process and the planning that we do along the way. As I mentioned, this really was meant to build upon a lot of the great work that was done in prior years, going back probably almost 15 years at this point. As you know, there were a number of planning initiatives and studies done during that time period and produced some good information and recommendations, but they, they have been a little dated at this point. And as we all know, in the last few years, the world has changed with COVID and other things. So part of Tashi's charge to us was to kind of look at those recommendations, see what the most relevant priorities are moving forward, and how we can kind of condense them into something a little bit more manageable as the city undergoes a master plan update and some of these various redevelopment, rehabilitation, preservation planning efforts that are going on in the city right now. So this is a, this slide shows a number of these planning studies and other plans over the years, and those are the things that we did a deep dive to kind of understand what, what was learned, so we didn't reinvent the wheel in the past, and what kind of needs to be updated, changed for prior projects and in the future. And so the idea, as I mentioned, really was to take those items, which you can see on the left, and use our effort with some outreach and updates to kind of really inform the effort going forward. And that's the main crux of our initiative here. The study area we focused on was based on the area in need of redevelopment study for the downtown area and the train station, and that was about to last year. The boundary, I think, changed a little bit, but for our purposes, that was what we kind of focused our effort on. And it really has the downtown, the bulk of the downtown, as part of it. Smith Street has the main spot and the several blocks around on either side, including the train station. And this is a transit hub plan, so a large part of what we looked at was the relationship and connections between different modes of transit and how this part of could link things together and be that memorable part for the city. So in order to start, we really did this deep dive on various studies and looked at that and then talked through and had a number of meetings with city staff and various stakeholders in the community, try to understand what some of the priorities were. And that helped shape us, what ultimately was a big, big part of our initiative, which was this survey and outreach that we had done in the fall. And so as part of our effort, we looked at all the recommendations from those other plans and, and used the survey to kind of test and see what people's feelings were based on those recommendations for some of the issues that were raised in those prior plans, so we could understand what needs to happen in terms of making recommendations moving forward. The survey, which hopefully some of you had the opportunity to take, and it's still active actually. And one of the reasons why we chose an online survey was that we wanted to be able to get the data that we can analyze and digest to help make the recommendations, but also that it's a tool that could potentially be used for future outreach. Because whether it's a master plan or redevelopment or other things, there are public outreach and public input components that go with that. And so we wanted to make sure that there was something that the city could use moving forward as a tool if they chose to, or after modifier, at least use the raw data. So in addition to the presentation here, which is a very brief overview, we have a little more detailed set of recommendations that were shared with you. And then we also have kind of the raw data that we gathered from the survey. So there's, there's a lot of good information there that can be used and digested and kind of inform the process as we keep moving forward. The survey that we did was conducted online. It was primarily in the fall of last year. It was done in English and Spanish, and it comprised about 20 questions total. They were a combination of multiple choice, kind of ranked choice, some direct input where you can make comments and commentary, and then we even used some images just to kind of put pictures to the words to understand some of the design and three-dimensional aspects of, of what we're doing. So for example, the, the slide on the top was an example of one of the questions that talked a little bit about sidewalks and sidewalk space in the street realm. And then below it is an example of one of the questions we had related to uses, for example, of the downtown area for upper floors, upper floors. So those were the types of kind of questions we had as part of the survey. We also had some team members go to some community events during the fall just to kind of promote it, to do some on-the-spot surveys or at least point people in the right direction in terms of where to do the, access the online survey so they could contribute. In all, we had about 300 responses total. And again, for, for our effort, it gave, it gave us some good information to make some recommendations, and we think that that really is the basis of what to continue as far as implementing outreach as these other efforts move forward. Some of the key takeaways, and we have, like I said, a much, much more detailed set of results that everyone can look at and, and try to understand a little bit more about what, what we heard as far as the survey. But some of the key takeaways that we looked at included, again, a strong support for looking at the upper floors of downtown buildings with the, with the remaining office and are there other opportunities, whether it's housing, community uses, to kind of reinvigorate, revitalize the great buildings, the historic buildings of downtown that are such an asset for the community. So that was something that came through. We tested a couple of questions on that, and it came through in the comments as well. That's something that's very, very much on the minds of people in terms of potential of other uses for downtown or other uses in different locations in downtown. As always, with an active downtown, there's always questions and comments related to parking and for different years. So one of the things that we heard was a lot of interest in different options for parking. Sometimes that runs counter to infill and revitalizing portions of it, but the downtown area, but we thought it's important to understand that. And then we get to our recommendations, we'll talk a little bit about that. And one of our big recommendations is that, you know, any redevelopment plan or any master planning effort really requires a very detailed inventory analysis department. It's just at this level, it's hard to kind of get, get to that, that number and how to balance those things, but that even for any sort of downtown planning effort, and that would be obviously a recommendation for, for the future plans. There's so many great community events in the city right now, and there was definitely an interest to kind of build upon that and look at other community events, whether it's festivals, whether it's markets, farmers markets, libraries, or art shows, things like that, to kind of activate and invigorate the downtown area. But also, there was a, the survey also showed a strong connection to the waterfront area as well, and making a linkage between the activities and the opportunity to the waterfront area and, and downtown and Smith Street and the train station area to kind of link the two together, because they do have kind of a dynamic between the two, and they both are great assets for the community and how that can be a major part of pro-keeping and public space for the downtown area. There were comments related to safety, security, better shelters and shade for people that are waiting for transit or waiting on the sidewalk or sitting on the bench, places to rest and stop. And there are opportunities for public space and other improvements. And I think there's a number of things going currently in the works that, you know, whether it's the improvements of in park or some of the other initiatives for downtown that will allow those kind of improvements to be made, but that was something that definitely ran through in the results we got from the survey. There was support for existing businesses, that, you know, that there was a good collection of existing businesses, but also a desire to see a little more diversity in types of businesses that were downtown and getting a little bit, a little bit blend of what's there, what's here now and what could be some additional uses and businesses within the core area. And then there, there was, and as someone who loves historic building, historic architecture, there was a great sense of pride that came through in terms of existing buildings and preserving, enhancing, upgrading facade and things like that to make what is already very special, even more special in terms of the core area. As I mentioned, there were some images that we tested as well. So these were some of the, the top rated images in this, in the image questions that we had, we had offered. As you can see, some of them related to preserving existing buildings, like the one in the upper left. So that was very important to kind of make sure that the historic character and the uniqueness of Perth Amboy brings through, no matter what the, what is done in terms of planning, and that something that's more foreign or generic looking is not what people in town want to see. They want to see the dynamic architecture that exists today. And so then, again, interest in kind of upgrading and improving streets, sidewalks for people that are shopping, walking, waiting for transit, that there are opportunities for other places to sit, a nice place to walk and have kind of shady and protected areas from, from the elements as, as you're using the core area in the area in this transit hub. We did, as I also mentioned, have a number of questions that allowed for some direct feedback, and we got some great comments. So whether it was the connection to the waterfront or some of the issues with safety in terms of pedestrians and bikes, or it was, you know, reaffirming of, of the beautiful architecture and making sure that that's something that is celebrated and honored and treasured as, as, as the planning efforts move forward, those are all in there. And again, we'll have the whole kind of set of results, including all the comments available for use in, in later planning studies that we move forward. So as a result of that, we put together a series of general recommendations and strategies. In the information that was distributed, it has, has more detail. I'm just going to kind of hit the highlights in an interest of time, but if there's anything in particular that anybody had a question on or had some more detailed information, let us know. And again, even those are fairly general in terms of their recommendation, because the idea is to really inform the more detailed, underway, if you can use them. So that's the key. So there were some kind of key themes that ran throughout the responses we got, the background information we researched, and the conversations we had with stakeholders in town. One of the, the key ones is, is to build upon the arts and cultural resources. Right now, the city has so many wonderful festivals, ethnic organizations, I think it's as a great example, and there's so many things that the city's already doing to leverage the, the talents and the backgrounds of people in here. And so the idea that you could build upon those things and use it as an anchor and, and continue that to feature and highlight those things is really active spaces, whether it's the waterfront works on Smith Street or in the downtown core around the train station. It's all important to kind of create that gravity and that activity center for, for the community. Parking, as I mentioned, is always, always a key to any sort of downtown planning. And as I had mentioned earlier, we are recommending a detailed parking inventory analysis be part of any planning effort moving forward to really understand the nuances of what, what is needed and what, what, what are some of the different options? If people are definitely looking for options in the survey. So whether that's, you know, the types and locations of parking, whether it's how things are metered and priced, or how there's certain times of day, there's certain locations that have tiers, whether there's requirements associated with ordinance or development agreements to require or allow for, you know, providing parking. Those are all things that a more detailed parking analysis and review can get into, that there are things that should be considered as, as the master plan, as the redevelopment things are being explored. We are, as I mentioned, this was a key focus, was transportation and mobility. So looking at pedestrian safety, traffic calming, making accommodations for different types of mobility, bike, pedestrian, you know, obviously ride shares, if it's part of transportation these days, the train station itself. There's a lot of ways people come and go, and it's important to kind of look at how those things relate and create a safe and comfortable environment for people that are using different forms of mobility. We looked at, because there's such great historic architecture in the downtown core and most of, if the street wall is intact, it's amazing to see. And so the idea that there are rehabilitation type statutes that allow for preservation, adaptive reuse, facade improvements, those sort of things, to kind of take all the wonderful things that exist in downtown now and really allow the city to kind of celebrate them and use that as part of the identity, continue to be part of the identity for the community. So that would mean looking at the existing buildings and doing things with the upper floors, for example, make them more active and vital and more used, but also it may be places where there's a small surface lot or a small underutilized lot where a single building that's consistent with the scale and character of the typical kind of main street buildings are included or mixed in and filling in some of those gaps. And then as far as sort of larger new construction, really limiting that to areas directly adjacent to the train, train station, where there are more open parking lots or underutilized land, and limiting that so that the downtown blocks themselves are not impacted, but the areas where there might be some available to do something, a little larger reconstruction is located somewhere closer to the train tracks and not in a place where it would involve affecting the building design. And so some of the images that we tested in the survey, we looked at issues of style, height, those sort of things. And so some of the images you see here are kind of consistent with that. One of them is from the top survey images, but they really reflect the kind of scale and character of the downtown building. So what we heard is that if there are new things that come in near the train station that they have consistency and cohesion with the downtown existing buildings. And so things like setting back upper stories and working massing and reforms so that they have a more consistent feel with, with the historic streets of the city and the city We, the survey looked at some things related to public space and incorporating additional public space in the street and sidewalks. One of the earlier plans One of the earlier plans had shown the concept of closing that one section of the avenue. That's something that, you know, we still think is something that should be considered or revisited as a pedestrian street, so there's an opportunity to have some additional programming, whether it's for outdoor dining, whether it's for farmer's markets, street fairs, those sort of things, it's an opportunity. So, the image that you see in the lower left is actually somewhere near on Upper Street, but there is something similar to it, and has a very, there's a lot of great restaurants that are actively at all times a day, all times of the week. Very successful, and something that the city might want to consider for that one block that we've been talking about. And then, as part of some of the earlier studies, where they looked at some developments at the train station, we think having some sort of public space at that end, the left end of the, of the Smith Street corridor would be a good thing to have as well, so you kind of have two ends. And then, with the improvements at Pink Park in the middle, it really gives you a nice balance in terms of public space and open space, shade, and shelter, and other things that we heard in the survey that we're looking for. And then, finally, looking at how we can incorporate new uses and design standards into that, and add quality planning updates, and master planning, zoning updates, and rehabilitation plans, rehabilitation plans, looking at ways that those uses, whether things that might not be allowed on upper floors now, in certain places, whether there are different uses, such as community uses, or daycare, or other things that would allow some of these spaces to be used, and preserve the buildings, and have a reason to kind of use the upper floors in a different way, if we think of it as good. And so, looking at different opportunities for those uses, but also how the market's in designing, go into the planning efforts to look at what's the proper time, what's the proper choice, like, in terms of usability standpoint, what makes sense, are there requirements for street trees, benches, that sort of thing, some of which is ongoing, if there are efforts that are currently underway, but things that might want to be considered as, as you write, new design requirements and development standards being deployed. So, again, that was just kind of a very high-level version of what we did, and there's a lot more detail in the, in the plans that we have. And we're happy to answer any specific questions, but really, our challenge here, as I mentioned at the beginning, was to kind of take and digest all of that information that had been done over the years, and kind of direct it so that we had good information leading forward with the master plan efforts and other planning efforts in the survey. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody has any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
I'm glad to see that there's movement on that area. That area is long overdue for redevelopment. I'm glad to see some movement. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'm going to have questions for the director.
Okay.
Ask questions.
Okay. I also want to commend the team that did all the survey and the study about the downtown. And you touched most, every single area that is really in need for that, for the city in general, but especially in the downtown, by the train station. We touched parking, cultural arts, and the different issues that also we confront, and we need to work on it to make it live. And I really thank you and your whole team, and thank you for coming today to present this to the council. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
I just wanted to say good evening and thank you as well. Exactly what my colleague said, touched on important issues such as parking, diverse businesses, which is crucial, festivals, and a way to redevelop as well. And also, I'm just curious about, what was the total response rate that you had? So, 300, how many did you, what was your sample size?
We didn't have a, we just, we just visited through email blasts, through community events, through different community organizations. So, as far as the potential, I'm not sure that that works. And like I said, it's a tool that we're continuing to use.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Vasquez. Mr. Puccio has a question for you.
A couple, actually. Two of the biggest commercial real estate owners in the downtown area are ETC and Paramount Properties.
Correct.
So where do they stand on all this? And what are they doing to enhance this plan to go into action?
So, they were invited to be part of the conversation, along with other business owners and other, not just landlords and property owners, were invited to be a part of the conversation. They did sit in on one of the, well, Paramount did not, ETC management did indeed sit in on one of the conversations or meetings. They were, like many of our respondents, very for the development approach, obviously, how they're looking, like many of our other property owners, for the opportunity to redevelop our downtown, or to rezone our downtown, and that's something that eventually will come to you all, indeed it is recommended in the master plan. Right now, what they're doing, they're basically on hold until we say what they could and can't do, in terms of changing the current use for the downtown, or what's currently allowed.
Well, I mean, I could see that some of the plans that, or surveys that were done, a lot of them are at least 10 years old.
Yes, and that's why we have the master plan happening, and now this, in addition to this, as Mike mentioned earlier, they wanted to revisit the plans to make sure that the recommendations were not outdated, or if there were new best practices recommended for this area.
Well, today, I had to go downtown. I had to go get my taxes done. It took me 45 minutes to find a parking space at 11 o'clock in the morning. And then, I'm going through the lots, and in the lots, I'm seeing, oh, this is reserved for the Vita, this is reserved for this one, this is reserved for that one. So how are we going to attract people to come here if we're already giving those parking spaces away?
So, that's a question.
So, I mean, parking, parking is rough right now. It is rough. For that sake, so, I mean, I understand, you know, it was a very good presentation, there was a lot of hard work done there, but this is a work in progress, and you need to have the other stakeholders involved, like ETC and Paramount. They own most of the property in the Smith Street and State Street area.
I will say that both of them were not only involved in these conversations, but they were also involved in our business expansion conversations, or the SIC, the Special Improvement District, expansion conversations. Not just them, we're talking from the mom and pops all the way to your bigger developers. We're making sure that we hear the voices of all of our stakeholders, and that we address all of our concerns, and that they're putting their part, too. In redevelopment plans, you know that in most of our redevelopment agreements, you know, parking is a requirement. We talk about what public improvements can be made, how can, you know, what public benefits in redevelopment agreements. So all of that is always a part forefront of the conversation. It's not even an afterthought. It's right in the beginning of the conversation, when we're working on redevelopment agreements. But that's separate and apart from this.
All right, but Paramount, to all of this, is parking. This plan doesn't work without parking.
And that's why it's recommended, sir.
Right, and even, even at the train station, there's only a certain amount of parking spaces. So if I'm commuting to New York City, or I want to go to New York, and I want to park my car, right, you only have a certain amount of parking spaces.
And that's due to the improvements that are happening, and the staging that's happening at this time.
Well, I'm even going back, I'm going back to before they started using it as a station.
The train station parking lot was never at 100% capacity before this construction, sir.
Right, so, I have this one question going back about Pink Park. Now, we purchased Pink Park for so much, I don't remember the figure, how much it was.
$425,000. We purchased the empty lot.
And in order to make it a park, what was that figure?
$1.2 million to construct the park.
What are we constructing that's going to cost $1.2 million?
So the cost includes taking down what's currently there, removing dead trees, improving the land before you could actually construct. It includes shade structures, benches, landscaping, sidewalk improvements, because you're not just going to do the park and leave the sidewalk.
How big is that lot?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I can't tell you, but I could pull it up and get it to you.
Director Vasquez, I'm not really trying to give you a hard time, but I actually know a little bit about landscaping and.
You're not just putting trees up, sir. We are going to do some improvements.
No, no, it doesn't need to be trees. I'm talking about the sidewalks, and all the other things that are involved. I like to know what you're going to get for $1.7 million.
And before we enter into.
That's a lot of money for a small area.
Before we enter into any agreement, we'll have that for you.
Excuse me?
Before we enter into any agreement with a developer, or the, I'm sorry, with an engineering firm, you'll have that plan, the cost estimate, all of the details before you for a vote.
Because all you're doing is putting trees in, a new sidewalk, and landscaping the land.
And shade structures, and a stage.
You're not putting public bathrooms in there.
We're putting water features, so not a public bathroom, but you are going to have water access so that we can land, you know, DPW can use it for landscaping, electrical work that needs to be done.
Where did the $1.7 million?
I have a cost estimate that I can present to you, and will, it will be presented to you when you need to vote on it, yes, sir. I have it now, if you'd like to see it.
The size of the lot is a fifty-foot maker.
It just seems like a lot of money for a small area to redo. It just seems like a lot of money. Concrete work doesn't cost that much. To remediate the land, right, which is a small area, right, you're going to take the top off, you're going to get rid of the dirt, put new dirt, put new sidewalks, and a water feature. Saying that's an outreach amount of money.
But, Mr. Puccio, I think she said that's going to come in front of us at the moment of voting. You're going to have all the details of it.
Madam President, I just wanted some clarification on how much it was going to cost.
Is this the grant, too?
And it's mostly grant-funded. So we got $688 from NJDCA, NPP ARP funding, and an additional $700,000 from UEZ funds, so we're well underway of covering it without incurring any charge to the city budget. Anybody else?
I'm glad that this is also in the works, finally. We're really in definite, you know, dire need of, you know, rehabilitation in that area. Bringing up the parking situation, has there any been kind of like any ideas of what type of parking?
So this is the first step, right? We take recommendations from these plans, we're waiting on our master plan. The master plan will address circulation, which includes parking recommendations. So right now, there's no actual plan as to what the parking remedy will be, but that's why we're initiating these studies and these plans, so that we can move in that direction.
Okay, and what's the next step after, now that you guys have done the study?
So once this plan, once this plan is now complete, we're waiting for our master plan, this would actually support the findings of the master plan, it'll come before you, potential rezoning, and other recommendations will come before you in the time coming.
You have like a timeline on how long that's going to be?
Yeah, that can be anywhere from six to nine months out.
Good, thank you.
I have a question. This has to do with parking. Might not be for you, maybe for someone else, but within the last couple of years, I don't remember, but maybe you could refresh my memory, did, did we change the requirements for parking for development?
So you're addressing the redevelopment plans for Area 1, 2, and 3, which are part of Focus 2020. There's been a ton of rumors that we changed our requirement from 1.5 to 1, and that is not the truth. We changed the parking requirement for onsite parking, not off-site parking, or not underground parking, so, no, it was not changed for all plans, and it was not reduced.
So for this area, it's not reduced?
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, this way, if we would have had a presentation before the pass for redevelopment, there wouldn't be these rumors going around.
So redevelopment plans, redevelopment plans are approved by the, are approved by council, so they'll come to you if needed, or when needed. They do come to you for approval.
As I was saying, this way, there wouldn't be misunderstandings, there wouldn't be rumors circulating around, and we would have been able to address these.
Unfortunately, I can't control what perception is, I can only control what's the information that's provided to you.
And also, we did try to have a presentation in the past.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum for speakers per ordinance. Number one, ordinance of the city of Port Amboy authorizing a one-year lease agreement with Easter Seals of New Jersey for office space in the Alexander F. Jankowski Community Center for non-monetary consideration pursuant to NJSA 48, Column 12-14, to be used for a public purpose commencing January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Number two, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 48, Column 4-45.14. Agenda, public comment, citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearings. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Reports, Jill A. Goldie CFO Controller submitted a copy of the post-sale memorandum regarding the bond sale provided by GB Association LLC, the city's financial advisor. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance amending Chapter 432 inclusionary zoning of the city code requiring all applicable developments to include a mandatory onsite affordable housing set aside.
Council President?
Yes.
Can I have, who's this, Tashi?
It's me.
Oh, can you just elaborate a little bit more, and then explain what's the actual change, I think we're changing 432?
Yeah, the, this was initially introduced late last year, when we were coming close to wrapping up the affordable housing litigation with Fair Share Housing Center.
Right.
We had to pull it, I think it was introduced in November of last year, we had to pull it because we weren't ready to wrap up that litigation. Now, we've finally come to terms with Fair Share on a consent order to resolve that litigation, bring the city into compliance with the zoning. This was, this amendment is going to be part of that consent order that finalizes the litigation. The change here, it allows for a project to go forward that was under agreement, the city was under agreements, accurate builders, power-approved redevelopment agreement, believe last November on that project. They had been in negotiations with the city, they established an escrow agreement, had been negotiating with the city while the initial, while the initial ordinance was adopted. This allows for that project to go forward under its current terms, and be in compliance with the ordinance, and Fair Share signed off on that significant number of affordable units, I mean, 94 affordable units for the city, so, you know, Fair Share eventually agreed with that, and we're introducing this tonight just to make sure that was all formal.
Okay.
Prior to the consent order being admitted to the courts, which I think was filed this week, so the court should have a decision on that around the time this is coming up for adoption, if it's introduced.
Okay, great, thank you. Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Recurs, ordinance number 621-92, adopted August 4, 1992, as amended by ordinance number 1944-2020, adopted May 27, 2020, also known as Chapter 425, seek of the Code of the City of Port Amboy. And this has been going back and forth and back and forth.
I agree. I do want to make a comment regarding this, this ordinance. Well, I have a question for the rest of the council members. The part where it says about the use of the dolly wheels and the skate-go-jack, I understand that you put in the ordinance regarding that it should be included with the, with the flat rate?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Is it possible that we can continue to? Is it possible that we can continue to put the, set the fee of the $80 per set of two for the dolly wheels, skate-go jacks, and then possibly write in the ordinance somewhere whether, you know, if they use it, they need to show documentation or proof, whether it's a picture, so that they, you know, that the, the consumer, the resident knows that it was actually used? Would you want to just leave it? I will ask the other council members what they think about it.
Madam President, you know, why don't we get one of the wrecker guys to come up here and explain what is their use behind the dollars? You know what I mean? Like, we're, we're all rookies at this. So can we get Mr. Toffick or anybody else from the towing thing back there? I think he's the only guy, actually.
We have a few, few representative women as well.
Is there somebody else here from the towing?
Yes, there is. We have a member of King High, and we have Scott Stolling, all car towing is on route. There's the other people on route that are right behind, but I'll be more than happy to ask you questions.
Let me just ask you this, Mr. Toffick. When would you need the dollars?
In special circumstances. So if you have an all-wheel drive, an expensive luxury car that cannot be dragged on top of a flatbed, you have a lot of electric cars in this area, a lot of Teslas, which each wheel has its own independent motor. You cannot roll the vehicle, so it was caused the dashboard to light up, all the sensors. The biggest issue that we have now is all the cars that you see all around town where the cars are, have what's called an airbag suspension, where the people park the car and they lower the vehicle where it sits on the ground. And it's impossible to get it towed out without the proper tools. So one, two things that we need for the stuff of vehicle, there's an airbag that slides underneath the car, and you hook it up to a compressor on the truck, and it lifts it up. Once the vehicle's up, you have to keep in mind that the wheels are standing inside the wheel wells, so it cannot move. So the dollars have to be assembled in order to have the vehicle removed safely without any damages.
No, I, question, the, I think you sent us photos of cars, right?
Yes. I had emailed you guys in the past.
Did you receive those pictures? I think that's what he was, was talking about.
And then you have all the newer cars that are all-wheel drive that have the electric emergency brakes, where as soon as you shut the vehicle off, automatically engages. One of two things could happen. You could drag the car, but it's gonna cause friction to the tires, and it's gonna have uneven wearing on the tire, or it's gonna have suspension damage. All the newer cars now have aluminum suspension. Something's gonna bend, something's gonna give, because you're causing force, you're causing the vehicle to move against its well. Some vehicles, their steering doesn't lack straight, so the vehicle steering wheels would turn as it's moving, which will cause the vehicle to be unsafe to tow, and it would go over to the next lane as it's being maneuvered. So there are special circumstances. Sometimes it's accidents, where the vehicle wheel completely comes off the car, or two wheels, or the vehicle has two flat tires. It's an essential tool that we really need to use.
I have another question for you. Why is a motorcycle so difficult?
Because it requires two people to haul it, because it's on two wheels. Someone has to hook it to the tow truck, and someone has to stand it straight. And once it's on the tow truck, you have to use a five-point safety strap to, which one person cannot do alone, so you need two people to do it. And the storage, you have to put it indoor, you can't leave it outside.
All right, let's go back, let's go back to two years ago. How much has your insurance gone up since then? And I think you'd probably be all speaking unison to that.
So from two years ago to now, my insurance probably doubled, along with everything else. Fuel prices went extremely to the roof, not just the insurance, but my fuel prices, the cost of operating, the expenses for the town, for our yards, water, sewer, taxes, the equipment, our tow trucks. The same tow truck that I purchased in 2018 for $80,000, right now it's $190,000. And there's a waiting list. You order it, and we have to wait two, three years to get it. There, there's no production. Same thing with the dollies. The dollies are not cheap, they're about $4,000. And you have to replace tires almost every 50, 60 miles. All four tires have to be replaced.
So, all right, so we'll go back to the dollies. So the dollies are important.
Very, very essential.
Especially with the electric cars.
Yes.
And the lowrider cars.
Yes.
And I don't see the air jack.
Airbags.
The airbag.
Correct.
Jack on the, when you would, was that added?
That's my kind of concern as well, I, just apart from this, I think that on Valentine's in February, there was an ordinance, we were all kind of coming to a consensus. Obviously, we weren't on the same page, but then the new one is completely different from what was proposed before. There was a lot of the fees specifically that were significantly lowered, that's not adding to, as you're saying, the costs, what, what the cost is now for towing, the insurance, everything going up. So it's just, a, after you're done, my question is just, why the complete significant change? I thought it was more amendments as opposed to completely different rates. So that's just once, once you're done.
He won't have that answer.
No, once he's done.
Because the thing is, everybody was supposed to give their input of what we wanted to see on that ordinance. And it came about, like, starting from scratch again, from all the recommendation, after looking, because one of the, one of the things that he brought over was that most of the municipality around us, they are higher and we are the lowest. So we went ourselves to all different municipality websites and extracted the, their ordinance, and I put it together separate, so we can see side by side of what each town had for towing. And that's where you were supposed to look at, without looking at the previous one that we just did it, without even looking at other municipality. And that's what we wanted to do. I think that if you want to propose any changes that you want to add, that is up to you, that's your choice. And I'll just have the members to speak on it and to decide what they want to do. To me, the way I look at it, I have some ideas, you have different, so that's, that's what we need to talk about. And I thank you for the information about the dollies and everything else that Mr. Puccio needed. Anybody needs any more information from him?
Well, I, you know, I'm not really familiar with, with skates are. What are skates?
Those skates are plastic components that would slide underneath the vehicle tires in case you have to slide it on or off the flatbed without causing friction to the tire itself, without damaging the car.
And they don't last forever?
Not at all.
They get worn out.
They're plastic, they wear down right away.
They get worn out. You can only get so many hours used out of those.
Correct. But your dragging, your dragging gets friction, so it wears down pretty quick.
Other questions for him?
No more questions for him. Okay.
Well, you know, I, I'm sorry, Madam President, I don't have any more questions for Mr. Toffick right this second.
Okay.
But, you know, I see that there's some proposed changes here.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if the rest of everybody's comfortable adopting those changes as opposed to what's in it right now.
And that's what we're here for.
Right, okay.
Okay? And just remember, this is the first reading.
I looked.
You can still change it and.
I looked this over, and I'm pretty close to saying I'm pretty cool with all of them right now. Me. I'm not sure about the $50 for the bag though.
The only thing I would suggest also is to add that, the airbag that you said that is required for the vehicles that.
Yeah, so that airbag basically, it goes underneath the car, so it's sort of off the ground.
Yeah, we forgot to add it on these changes. I forgot to write it out, but anyway.
Madam President, and as far as the dollies concerned, I feel that, you know, it's more necessary now to use the dollies than there ever was before, with the advent of all these electric cars. So, I mean, we're putting an undue burden on the tow truck company. If they damage those cars, they're responsible. So, and the same thing is, the dollies don't last forever.
Right. And also, keep in mind that most of the vehicles that are being productive now are all-wheel drives. The Honda Cords are coming out all-wheel drives, the Toyota Camrys are coming out all-wheel drives, so even your midsize and smaller cars are also all-wheel drive. So it's also to prevent the vehicle from getting damaged, which would fall on us if something happens and it's not towed properly because of the lack of proper equipment or, and on top of that, it's not fair for us to use them, I got paid for it, simply not fair.
Okay. Well, when, I was trying to make a decision with all this, I was trying to be fair, you know, trying to be fair to you and also fair to the residents. So we came to a, you know, trying to compromise, what is fair for, you know, for both. What I think, what was one of the concerns about the dollies and the go skate jacks is that, how do you know when a tow company is not actually using, you know, the dollies? If, if the resident is not actually there? But it was, it brought up to, you know, there was an idea to provide some document, you know, maybe possibly a picture, proof of document that it was being used.
So if the vehicles are police tow, it's documented on the police release, so when the officer's on the scene, and we're on the scene, and we're towing the vehicle, there's actually a box, a checkoff list. So one of it is the special equipment. So on the police sheet, the tow release, it is documented on there. If it is a private matter, we always take pictures, especially to avoid someone claiming damages that would be existing, so there's always pictures to prove of evidence. So it's always available upon request.
That's what I'm talking about, the, the private toes, where the police officer is not involved, you know, nobody's there to witness. We, you know, it would, it should stipulate that there should be some type of document or proof that it was used.
True.
Okay, but in, in another hand, like someone, okay, you can, you can have that picture maybe presented for the person that will complain. And there was one person who came up to me about her car being towed, and her door was broken, something on the door of, the door of the car was broken. And that particular person asked the question, no answer. So I feel that, that an itemized bill should be presented to the, to the, to the residents who, or the client, and she didn't have anything like that. And that is in the ordinance, and that was a private tow. So those are the things that, to me, I figure, and thank you for the recommendation that you gave, to kind of classify different cars by weight. I think it makes it cleaner for the, cleaner for the ordinance to be followed, and I think we have to take it from there. Whatever the members feel that they want to add or take away, I think is something that you have to propose and then let all, all the others' members just decide how they feel about it.
So speaking from myself, and also from interacting with the other towing companies, picking up cost for them or why not, or for insurance companies, there's always an itemized bill given, always. I could show you any of my receipts at any given point, that it always has line by line, everything itemized. If the actual tow charge, what the service was, if dollies were charged, everything's line by line, itemized. I could assure you, that's always a, a practice.
Yeah, I mean, it just happened that she didn't. But that, that's my experience.
Please do, or I don't know who can answer this question, but if a towing company is not abiding by the ordinance, like, not providing the, the customer with an itemized bill, what can happen to the?
The ordinance has a penalty section, so, I mean, the.
The, the customer would have to file a complaint or something, if they do.
Yeah, the, right now, the, the language regarding the itemized invoices, that's new proposed language.
Right.
So I, I would say, under Section 17, so all the, you have the ordinance in front of you, all the, the fees are laid out in Section 12, if you go to Section 17, you know, there's, anybody who violates provisions of the chapter, there's fines, things like that. So yes, I mean, somebody would have to complain about it, and we'd have to write a summons, but there are penalties for not adhering to the requirements.
Okay. You good with the questions?
I'm good. I mean, unless there's another towing company that would like to put there.
But you see, this is not for their discussion. We already asked the question of how things are used. Now it's for us to decide what we're gonna add to it, and then they could have their time on the second reading.
Do we decide now?
When it's open. Well, you can propose whatever you want to add to it or take away.
I think that, that Mr. Morales, I mean, her proposal, I mean, she would have to propose it, I see her name over here.
She was. Yeah. I think, I think we should put the, you know, the dollies and go skate. That's my, my opinion. If anybody else agrees, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, well, right now, the question was, when do we use it and everything, but. But we just, we have, we have six years to the dollars, we have six years, it's definitely not due until the end of the year.
Thank you.
It's, it's interesting.
Thank you.
And they're all technology.
Okay. In the way, I, I can say how I feel about the dollars. And the way I feel that in the flat rate, I feel that should be part of it, the flat rate, whether you use it or not. And that's my personal opinion. But it's up to you. If you want to add it, you, you have to put it for us to look into it.
I think we all have to, should agree, huh?
Right.
I agree. I think, I believe that it should be added separately from the toll rate.
I second.
Yeah. Me too. I see you. Yeah.
After explaining, I appreciate that, you breaking everything down.
Well, I just want you to understand that we also went up on the prices on their flat rate, and not you only adding the flat rate to be raised, but you also adding other things that could be charged to the residents. But anyway.
Madam President, may I, may I speak on this, please?
Okay.
Yeah.
Get closer to him.
Obviously, I have experience working with the tow truck drivers for 30 years as a police officer. And what we're all losing sight of here is the fact that they deserve to be paid for their, compensated, because they are providing a service. But, but, it's very simple. You get a car accident, your car's damaged, it has to be towed, and the police are there, they're gonna have the car towed by whoever the on-call wrecker is. 99% of the time, the insurance company is taking care of that tow. Right? That's the first thing. The second thing is, when, when the police are towing a vehicle, it's because somebody broke the law or violated the ordinance. Very simple. If somebody's driving without a license, it's on them. They got caught driving without a license, they get their car towed, that is on them. That isn't on the tow truck guys or a DWI, drunk driver. So, you know, at the end of the day, I feel for the citizens, but the average citizen isn't the one that uses the tow truck guy. So at the end of the day, I think we're using them as punching bags sometimes, and it's not fair to them. These guys come out in the middle of the night in snowstorms, they're out there towing cars, they're, again, people can't read the sign that says no parking on Snow Street, and they come out there and they move the car. So my point is, if you are a law-abiding citizen, you won't be affected by this whatsoever. And, you know, and I heard this argument several times already, and it's just not fair to them. And, you know, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, they provide a service, and I've sat here for 15 months and heard everybody get a raise because they deserve it, you know? And I'll go back to that six-figure thing again. You know, and I'll go back to that six-figure thing again. You know, the people in Woodbridge are getting six-figure salaries, so the guys in Perth Bay, we gotta get six-figure salaries. Tow truck drivers should be compensated for their time. You know, and that's it. I, I believe we shouldn't, they shouldn't break the bank. And all I could, my only thing to you guys are, if we're advocating for you, understand that we're just trying to be fair to everybody. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, so, uh, the part that we forgot to send, Mr. Opal, was...
Oh, adding the, uh, airbag jacks, that's what it's called, I think, right? The air jacks.
So can we just, and it may be a little bit, um, timely, but can we just go over what was proposed, so that way they're aware?
I think Mr. Opal...
Mr. Opal?
I've, I've been following along, so, um, four twenty-five, I'll, I'll direct, four twenty-five twelve.
Yes.
The new version that was submitted to you today. It's Section A, and then you go all the way down to, on the, you flip the page to subsection three, where it says for other related services at the top. Um, it was proposed in this version that the use of dolly wheels and the use of skates and go jacks, that those would be removed and that they would be part of the flat fee for each class of vehicle on the prior page. Is it the council's desire to make those separate fees apart from the flat fee?
Yes.
Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay, so add those back in.
And add the, uh, the air jacks.
Air jacks, and what was the price?
Seventy-five? It was a fifty. Hold on a second, let me get, sorry. I believe that was seventy-five. Can I get back to you on that?
What?
No, I wrote it, oh, here it is, it's seventy-five, sorry.
Seventy-five? So we'll make, the, the version that you'll vote on tonight will include those changes. And then there are some corresponding changes that I'll make to the sections about each class of vehicle, where we made reference that, um, the use of those devices would be part of the flat rate. I'll remove that language, so we'll make it all, um, you know, correspond with what the council wants. So, um, I have that, I'll, I'll send, you know, you'll vote on this obviously tonight, but I'll send a clean copy for the next meeting, so you see the changes.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Opal.
And I think for Class One, we had all agreed that it would be one sixty-five, correct?
Yes.
As opposed to what it was lower to?
One hundred.
Yeah.
What was that?
Are we clear on that?
That it was one sixty-five for Class One?
For Class One.
Yeah, because you incorporated changes. Are we good?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna ask another question about something. I guess we'll ask Scott, because you've got the big trucks, right? You have a major accident where a truck rolls over and goes down into banking. So you have, like, major stuff going on. What does that entail?
A whole lot of men and a whole lot of... And there's nothing in the ordinance that could save, so I'd have to go out there and do the job, the way the ordinance reads now, because we're under such scrutiny. And probably use ten thousand pounds or three thousand pounds. And that's no lie.
Well, how, well, let me ask you a question.
It doesn't happen that often in the state that it's happening.
And obviously, it would involve winching and everything else.
Winching, cleanups, transferring loads, skid steers, front-end loaders, dumpsters.
Before I ask about it, whether or not it can be included, just walk me briefly through it in thirty seconds. What you would have to do?
If you had a truck, let's say, like, used to load low bridges.
Right.
You have to top the, rest of the part of the trailer that's off, secure the walls, transfer the load, forty-two, fifty-three thousand pounds to another trailer, which involves machines, forklifts, skid steers, manpower, shrink wraps, skids, uh, pallets, pallet jack, you know, whatever's garbage that has to be disposed of, dumpsters, a roll-off truck, man, again, the manpower. Two, three heavy duties, you know, you have to lift it up to transfer load, special dollar that we have made that goes underneath the trailer when it bends in the hand. Is that long enough? Now, all of those fees, just for the record, are listed by-lined item in the State Police SOP. And I highly recommend we adopt that. It covers the fee and everything to a thing. There's no, I mean, it doesn't happen often, but what am I gonna do if it happens tonight?
I mean, it sounds like you'd be going through a lot of different things on here, especially, uh, winching.
It's not just winching, that's the least of it.
No, no, but I'm just saying is, I mean, I've seen a couple times, stuff like that need...
You know, we're talking two, two, two and a half million dollars worth of equipment out there.
For now, can I just say I'm gonna take that under advisement, I'm gonna do my research. You can make amends only for the next meeting, right? Right?
The best guidance I can give you is...
We probably have to, if we're going to something like that, we probably have to reintroduce it next time, but...
Yeah, so we have to make the decision.
I mean, it can be amended, you don't have to do all of the amendments now. I mean, you can adopt this as, as you've just discussed, and then after you've taken the time to look and see if there's anything you want to add, you can propose amendments in the future. There's no time limit on it, but I'm saying if you're going to propose something to add to this between now and the next meeting, I would say we'd have to reintroduce it.
Like now, I'm looking at Woodbridge stuff and what they're charged for some of the stuff that we're talking about. I, I, I'm gonna have to look at the State Police.
It's, it's really clear, if there's no question, it breaks it down hourly, every piece of equipment that you may need or may not need. That just, no, that's not a joke, just have a go. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we good? Okay, let's continue. Resolutions, R ninety-five three twenty-four consenting?
Sorry, my last question. So what was proposed today, is that what everything, Mr. Opal, you have that will replace what's currently published?
Well, in here, what, what is on the, on the one that he gave you here? Adding the air jacks and the dollies and...
And then all the changes that use it.
Yes.
You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. R ninety-five three twenty-four consenting to the appointment of and approving a contract with Joseph K. Kong P.E. and T.N.M. Associates as contract city engineer and contract director of division of engineering in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. R ninety-six three twenty-four authorizing a contract with TYMCO, Inc. for the purchase of a Model 600 sweeper with standard equipment in accordance with Sourcewell Contract Number One Twenty-two oh seventeen dash TYM in an amount not to exceed three hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and five dollars.
Council President, I have a question about this, is, um, Mr. Neves here?
Hi, Ms. Neves, can you just elaborate more on what, you know, this, the sweeper? Is this like a contract that we have specifically with this company?
No, this is actual equipment. You know the sweeper that you see in the business district, the big machine with the broom on the side?
Right.
That's what this is.
But this is what, what that is?
Yes.
Um, is there, like, other, were they, this is a contract with this company? Or was it, were you able to get, um, maybe bids from other, you know, to see if there's not something that's cheaper, or...
No, this is set through a, a state contract.
A state contract, okay.
So it's not, yeah, it's, it's put out there, and people, um, we do advertise it. It's not like only one person is advertising every company that is included in that state contract. They have the opportunity to actually bid on it. They have, uh, an opportunity to actually respond to the advertisement. So Tim Cole was the only one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
R ninety-seven three twenty-four authorizing change order number one to the contract with T.N.M. Associates for professional engineering services for Sunshine Alley Improvement in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars. R ninety-eight three twenty-four authorizing settlement, settlement of the workers' compensation litigation via an order approving settlement in the matter entitled Hanny Toffit versus the City of Port Deamboy CP Number Twenty-two four dash nineteen thirty-nine for the amount of forty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. R ninety-nine three twenty-four accepting the Neighborhood Preservation Program NPP Year Four Strategic Implementation Plan for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. R one hundred three twenty-four authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for urban enterprise zone assistance fund, funds for, for public safety purposes in the urban enterprise zone program in an amount not to exceed four hundred, five hundred thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars with seventy-five cents for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Council President?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to ask, this is Ms. Vasquez? What is, um, exactly what, what is this gonna be used for, as, as far as public safety purposes?
Sure thing, so every year with our U E Z allocation, twenty percent, twenty percent of our total allocation is to be set aside for public safety. This year, this amount is twenty percent of our total allocation to be used. What we will be applying, once you consent, it doesn't mean the state will approve it, um, because the U E Z State Board has ultimate say on what we can do and can't do with those funds. Uh, we will be applying for, um, costs to include personnel. So additional, uh, uh, public safety personnel in the business districts or in the U E Z zones, um, through off-duty source, because we can't hire additional personnel with these funds. So it has to be outsourced, um, through Jobs for Blue or overtime, things of that nature. Um, it'll also include the purchase of vehicles, uh, segways and bikes to add additional presence and safety in the business districts.
Would this be something like the, the C, what was that, the C, C C P, um? P C P, that one. Would it be something similar to that, that we used to have back in...
I'm not sure what P P C P is, ma'am.
We used to have, um, police officers...
Oh, like, community policing or such? Yes, ma'am, yes, in the business district, yes.
So that there was police presence around, especially around the waterfront area?
And specifically in your height terms of the summer, spring, holiday season, et cetera.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
I have a question, um, what is the difference between this? And are, are we creating a new department or these new employees? I know that we've had this community policing in the past, but when was the last time we've had this community policing? And are we developing a new program? And what is the difference from that type of policing in our auxiliary force that currently exists?
So I can't speak to the difference, the chief can, but what I could say is that U E Z funds cannot be used to, um, supplement the, you know, the city budget. So we can't use the funds to, um, pay for existing personnel.
Right, it'll be used to defray what's currently being utilized. So with, um, like she was saying, with U E Z funding, it's gonna defray the cost. So it's not adding additional funds to the budget, it's gonna defray the cost that's there. So for example, with the special ones, if we use them, we can add those during times that, I wouldn't say high crime rate, but during times, it's gonna be more increased presence in the city. For example, like she said, during summer festivals, this money will be used to defray that cost. There is community policing, I don't want to say that there isn't. And I wanted, like you said, the chief should speak to that directly, not me, since he's our expert on that.
I've known it's been done in the past, like in the town of Trenton, where the, where the business district worked directly with the police department, and those funds were directly allocated to expand their auxiliary police. So I think that would be a great use of these funds if we're going to expand our auxiliary police. But if this is gonna go just for an open fund, or maybe even hiring a third party for security purposes...
So special ones are included in this five hundred thousand? Special ones cover, um...
The cost, right?
And chief could elaborate on...
And currently, how many auxiliary officers do we have? And how many do we have that will be able to be active this summer?
I'll start with the last question first. Um, currently, we have a total of eight auxiliary police officers, and we have five that are in auxiliary police academy at this point, with an expected graduation date of mid-May, mid-to-end of May. It is not for lack of trying, we have been out there pushing that, uh, as we have in the past. As you know, people don't necessarily volunteer as much as they did anymore, uh, as they had in the past, and it gets a little more difficult to be able to, to do that. But we are certainly out, at hitting the ground running with that and getting as many as we can. And those officers, many of them potentially want to be police officers, and that's where they get hired too, the special ones, and then they get hired onto the full-time force. So that's also another reason why we don't have all that many as we like to, or what we've had in the past.
How many, sorry, how many maximum auxiliary police officers do we usually can have, or...
There is no maximum to the table of organization, no.
Okay. But right now, you said we have eight, and that's five in, in the academy.
That's correct, yes. Uh, as far as the funding, I guess the best way to describe this is this would be dedicated police officers to the U E Z area.
So now, that is tied to this funding. So say if we have a schedule, you know, if the funding exists for this year, and we create a schedule for the U E Z, for, for the auxiliaries to, you know, to patrol that area at certain times, but then hypothetically, the funding goes away next year, will we still be able to provide that same exact services that we were providing if that funding went away?
Two things, one is, we cannot pay auxiliaries. Auxiliaries receive a stipend, they are volunteers, so they receive a stipend and clothing allowance basically for what they do. So we can't directly pay them for their duties, okay? They fall under the Office of Emergency Management and are deployed for training purposes.
So I'm a little confused now, because when we were, this funding here was said it was gonna go specifically for that.
Special ones.
For special ones.
That's different.
Okay, so for auxiliary, so now we said auxiliary saves us money because we do not cover it. But we could hire, and with that money, we could send additional auxiliary to the academy, where they're able to now be auxiliary for Port Deamboy and hopefully become officers in the future.
Right now, funding is not limiting that pool, it's manpower. It's people that want to do this stuff. So money, I don't want to say money's not an option, money's always a problem, but it's not, it's not hindering us right now from getting a job.
So take away the auxiliary portion of it. So say the funding right now that we have, that they're asking for, is to provide specific patrolling at a designated area that we feel that needs patrolling, okay? If that funding goes away, are we still able to provide that same service?
What I would say is it would be the same services we have today. This would be an additional service. If that money is not there, then that additional service would not able to be able to be there. So it would be the current level, what we have today, because again, this is additional money to have additional patrols and so forth in that area. So what we would lose would be that addition if this money was, was not there any longer.
So currently, what I hear from my constituents is that there's little patrolling, especially in that area. And they would like to see an increase of patrolling. But I'm saying this, that it shouldn't be married to a grant, that we should already just be providing this service, that we should find within our budget of how we could increase it, and how could we provide this service? And, and not just every year provide a certain service if we get lucky enough to receive a grant for it or not, but this is something that everyone has been asking for. And a lot of money has passed through, through this table in the last couple of years. This is something that is so important, that I've heard so many constituents speak about, that I'm surprised that we're only addressing it through a grant, that's a possibility, and we haven't addressed it directly through the budget and allocated that additional resources to have this. This way we can have this ongoing, and not just for a grant that we've received it or not.
I don't want to steal the chief's thunder, I'm gonna let you... I don't want to steal the chief's thunder, I'm going to let you talk, but I do want to say one thing, which is what the councilman was referring to, is a long-term strategic thinking. And thank you to the chief because he brought this idea and thank you to the council for passing it. It was the fiber optic plan that we're moving forward with. So regardless, like you're saying, whether money's there in the budget or not, we will still have cameras throughout the city. So it's another aspect and avenue to still multiply force and look to the future, not always having somebody there, but still having eyesight and presence in the community.
There's been a lot of issues with those cameras specifically in that area, you know, and I hope it's not true, but since we don't really get public updates, I have to rely on whatever is going on, the public comments. And what I'm hearing about some of those cameras, it's a little disturbing.
Two things. One is as far as that, what you mentioned about the additional and being able to increase, as you're aware, we are, we have, we've increased the number of police officers, you've increased the table of organization for police officers here right on this board to be able for us to go up to 145. So that level is increasing. When I say today, I mean today because the officers are still in field training, they're not released yet. Those additional 14 officers will be hitting the street within the next month. So at that point in time, you'll see the additional officers that besides, regardless of this funding. So it's not only that addition, it's the additional addition to that is what we have there. And the way that I understand is, again, this, this public safety component is up 20% so that would be there. That number may fluctuate from year to year, but I understand that that money would be there so we'd be able to do that. So not only is it going to be more than this today already without this, it's going to be more, more than that than, than what it is. And with respect to, you mentioned some issues as far as the cameras, councilman, I have no issue unless, if you want to go through the business administration, however, you've got my phone number, give me a call if you have any, hey, I heard this or whatever, I'll gladly speak with you anytime and try to get you the answers to any questions that you may have because, again, there's a lot of misconceptions out there, a lot of miss or disinformation that's put out and so forth. And I'll give you the straight scoop as I always do, whatever I can do to help, that goes for anyone on the board, whatever information I can give you that would, would set us straight or anything that may be. As a matter of fact, today, we even had a little thing back and forth, this, hey, I heard something on Facebook and boom, it was straightened out, so.
Great, since I have you here, I was going to mention something in my council comments, but I'm going to ask for it now. I haven't been able to digest the state's COVID response report completely yet, but I will be digesting it within this week. At the same time, I would like to hopefully have our own. And in the meantime, what I would like is for the next meeting, if you could compile the finalized numbers for COVID for the City of Perth Amboy. I know we were one of the most hit municipalities, cities in our county. So I would like to see these finalized numbers and hopefully, and, well, once we go that, I probably would ask for other things in the future, like what plans do we have for in the future if this, if COVID arose again next week? Are we prepared for this? So these are things that I'm going to be asking, but for those numbers, I think that's the most important thing first while I'm reading the state's report and to see how the state's report reflects on our own municipality.
Absolutely. And those numbers, we would have to get them from the county health department because we wouldn't have any of those numbers about them, but we'll, we'll get that information.
A couple of weeks, we should be able to have it.
I think one of the highlights, and I got to breeze over the executive summary of that report, I didn't get a chance to digest the entire report. But one of the important things they talked about, and you'll see it all over TV, is the issue about PPE and no one being ready with PPE or having N95 masks. And I can tell you, I've said this up here before and I will tell you again, we had 10,000 N95 masks the day that that hit almost four years ago. No other municipality in the county of Middlesex had that or anywhere around. No one had that. We were the first to have our police officers and firefighters fit tested to get those masks in there. No one else had that. So we had, and I may add, free of charge because they came from the military. That was military surplus. We had 10,000 of those masks stored behind police headquarters just for that event. So you talk about being prepared, we are and we were. That's one of the things that the state report specifically says. I'm not saying everything was perfect, you know, again, there's, there's many things to do, but on that front, which was probably one of the most important things that continually gets referred to is the N95s and a proper respiratory protection for first responders, we were there, we had that.
I'm just going to just mention a little thing about my experience with COVID and joining the council because I joined in in January of 2020, but we were still knee-deep in COVID where there, we didn't, there was no light at the end of the tunnel, we didn't know when there was going to be an end, if there was going to be a vaccination or anything like that. I was not at the swearing-in meeting and there was reasons for it. And during that time, there was meetings being conducted and these meetings were not following state mandated protocols. And so these are, these are things that I would like to address in the future and to see maybe if we could have handled it better or if we're prepared to handle something of this magnitude again in the future. But those numbers will, will sure be telling, especially when I compare them to other municipalities similar to ours and to see where we could go from there and how we could approve this, especially since it affects the most important asset of this community, the residents. Thank you.
I have to ask the chief something. Well, I, I think before Director Vasquez alluded to the funding, I think you talked about off-duty police officers, right? So that would be like an off-duty job, which is like different. So you would have a sworn officer walk in the beat, which we've done that on and off through the years where there's grant money available to pay two officers to walk the downtown area, sometimes during Christmas, sometimes in the summertime.
Absolutely. Had, had a pass, seat of patrol was back in the day and was, it was many other programs that would do that.
I, I thought she said that because she referred to the company that we used to assign the off-duty jobs.
Yes. So it would basically be similar, one of the things you're going to see tonight, I think, is a distracted driving patrol, same thing where people are targeted, officers are there targeting that, it would be the same thing.
Like DWI grants, the distracted driver.
Yes. And it should be specifically there. So one thing it does is these officers would not necessarily have to respond to any other calls for service except in that particular area, so they'd be more available to do that. There would be a supplement to the officers that are already on the, on the street.
For next month?
Very cool.
For next month? For the, yes, for the, the one?
Distracted driving, yes. But the, the same idea with the UEZ, that the officers would be an overtime patrol for that particular areas.
The only other person that would remember this here is, is Mr. Ballot making the rings at the call boxes.
I remember it.
Yeah? Back in the day.
Oh, yes, I remember it.
No, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks, Director Vasquez, back there.
Okay, R 101 324 authorizing submission of a grant application and execution of a grant contract with the New Jersey Division, Division of Highway Traffic Safety for the 2024 Distracted Driving Statewide Crackdown Grant. R 102 324 authorizing the second year of the contract with Printing Copy Center in the amount not to exceed $30,000. R 103 324 authorizing a contract to Cintas Corporation for Uniform Purchase and Uniform Rental for Recreation Department, Parking Utility Code Enforcement, Marina Utility, Animal Control, Traffic Maintenance Police Department, Maintenance Staff and Office of Aging in accordance with Omnia Partners National IPA slash U S Communities Contract Number R dash BB dash 19, 19002 for the period of retroactive January 1st, 2024 and terminating December 31st, 2024 in the total amount of 80, $81,000. R 104 324 authorizing change order number one to the contract with Hughes Environmental Engineering Inc. for pool pack preventive maintenance and repair in the amount of $17,127 with 24 cents. R 105 324 authorizing submission of a bid to accept grant funding for provision of state community and family court appropriation programs to youth residing in Middlesex County pursuant to Resolution 24 dash 230R adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. R 106 324 authorizing change order number one to the contract with Core and Main for the purchase of 3,541 water meters of various sizes in accordance with the Educational Service Commission of New Jersey number 65M C E S C C P S R F P number E S C N J 19 slash 20 dash 27 in the amount not to exceed the sum amount of $1,500. R 107 324 authorizing a contract with Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company for the emergency repairs to the bar screen at the Second Street Pump Station in the amount not to exceed
Madam President? I remember we were here for the agenda prep and ran into the engineer and he was talking about how things get caught in the screens. So and I, I made a suggestion to him and I'm, now I'm going to put it out to, out in the open. There's a lot of items that are found in those screens, like he mentioned wedding bands and stuff like that. And we're not making the public aware of items that they probably could redeem. I mean, I don't think we should blow that off. I mean, aside from the gun stuff and guns like that, the police are notified, but you know, keepsakes like that, like a chain, a wedding ring, a high school ring, or any kind of item that, you know, once a year, you take all the items that were pulled out of that screen that are, and posted on social media, hey, we found all this stuff inside the screen in the sewer system. I mean, I, I know it sounds crazy, but you know, that day when he mentioned it, it kind of just clicked in my head. If I lost my wedding ring, right? And then somewhere along the line, it shows up in, down at the wastewater treatment plant, I would like to know about it.
I just made note of it and we'll do that once a year, like you're saying, in conjunction with the chief of staff on the set, working with us to make sure we put it on. What we found, it looks like some of the authorities will advertise it.
I was going to say, is you do it every month?
No, I said once a year, did I say?
Yeah, once a year. Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. R 108 324 authorizing refund of nine handicap parking space application fees in the total amount of $900 due to denial by the police department. R 109 324 consenting to the person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption license number 1216 dash 32 dash 069 dash 013 held in the name of Drinks To Go LLC at 890 Amboy Avenue to Serene Drinks To, To Go LLC effective March 14, 2024.
Council President?
Yes.
The seller of this license asked that it be held, there's some problems with the financing.
Okay, so we're pulling that one? Okay, thank you. R 110 324 consenting to the appointment of Joyce Lee Morales to the rent leveling board as a regular member to fill the unexpired term expiring December 31st, 2024. R 111 324 consenting to the appointment of Alma Benavides to the rent leveling board as a regular member for a two-year terming, term expiring December 31st, 2025. R 112 324 consenting to the appointment of Catherine Hackwes to the rent leveling board as alternate number one to fill the unexpired term expiring December 31st, 2024. R 113 324 authorizing emergency temporary appropriation to extend the calendar year 2024 temporary budget in the amount of $29,000. And closed session resolution. R 94 324 authorizing a closed session at the March 13, 2024 meeting to discuss workers' compensation litigation Hanny Toffit versus City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Is this the only one we're going to be talking about? Can we talk about something?
Do you want to add something?
Well, I have a question regarding liquor license.
Is it related to enforcement?
About an email that we received. Well, about a liquor license that had lapsed. I don't think that's the one that the state found that they didn't do.
Oh, no, well, what's the question?
Oh, so they have time to mitigate their, the, the problem that they have elapsed?
They, they have to.
Even though they haven't renewed their licenses last year?
They can't operate until they clear that up, so.
But how they've been operating all this time without?
They were just made aware, so once they found out that they were not in compliance, they had to stop, but they're aware of the issue, they're taking, from what I understand, they're taking steps to clarify it, so that's all we can really do right now.
Mr. Opel, what happens if they don't stop?
Then the police department's going.
They haven't, they haven't been operating since the time their, their license has?
We notified them as soon as we got the email from the state. So they, they're not operating as far as I, I know. They were told not to.
The police department would have to, if there's an issue where they're operating right now, like if they were to operate without a license, that would be, it would be a violation of the ABC regulations and we'd have to, the city would have to take appropriate action.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's all you need for that? Okay, all in favor for the closed session? Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
$10,359 per cabinet. So Pink Parks that are costing $2.1 million.
No.
No, it's $400,000 for the property, 1.7 for improvements, 2.1.
I remember her saying 1.7, I think.
Seven for improvements, 400 for how much? So total 140, 1 million 70 for the whole property? Whatever. You still talk at 2,000 for a square yard, it's 1.5. It's $2,000 per square yard. That's a lot of money. Nine feet is a square yard, if anybody doesn't know that. They don't, they don't keep that straight. Woodbridge got all that money for a boardwalk, millions. Asbury Park, Atlantic City, we get zip. What's the difference between us and Woodbridge? They're closer to the county, Mr. Gabe's office is there. I mean, how can we do anything for our boardwalk? I mean, it was millions given out, I'm not talking about millions, we may be getting triples, but they got millions, millions for their boardwalk or their trail. So, you know, and then there was a comment about, we got a grant, $3 million, other than, I guess the housing then, 20% is going to go to some salary outside contract. And there's 300 people with $25,000 possibly. That's not a lot of money if you're going to give $25,000. Plus, we only got 20 to 25% homeownership. Is the people that got the LLCs, everybody that's collecting all this money, then we entitled to get that money? Or the people that own homes or the LLCs? That's a good question when they come in here and that list to get people to get that money should be posted. Because of the years of this town of grant money being misspent is great. Unbelievable how much grant money. Everybody says, well, we're not spending grant money. Yes, it is. We send the money to the federal government, which we, in the state of New Jersey, send more money to the federal government than we get back and because we misuse it. That's what happened to the UEZ money and that's with everything else. I mean, you want to talk about the bid, you tell me on Smith Street, what is better in 30 years that the bid did? Any one of you, you said a lot today, but tell me one good thing that the bid did on Smith Street that looks really good. Now, I want to talk about the employee health and the drugs that I've been talking about and stuff like that. If somebody can give me an answer here, what's the two-tier drug level and who made the two-tier drug level up for city employees? There's one tier, there's two tiers, it might even be a three tier. Now, like I said before, people used to get Viagra when they were specialized. Now, who made the, the two-tier system for drugs? Now, who made the two-tier system for drugs for city employees?
I don't know what you're talking about, what two tiers, one thing I will say, as you know, the con, each union negotiates with the city and anytime, as you know, anytime negotiate the healthcare has to equal to or better than.
Correct.
Okay.
But according to Cigna, there's a two-tier program. Some pay more, some drugs cost more because it's in a different tier. Now, I don't understand when a doctor gives you a prescription for a drug, they may make a tier for it. That's what I don't understand. So, certain employees are getting mistreated because they're paying more money because it's in a different tier, not because you're getting one drug and I could see a generic or the generic, you get the generic. If there's a new drug that just comes out, you pay for that, but no, they took drugs and said, it's a different tier. We're paying more money for that. So, when did that come about? We got a new broker, now all of a sudden, now rumor has it, they're starting up a pharmaceutical company or something. So, where did the tier system? So, you're gonna tell somebody you're gonna pay more for your health because there's a tier system for drugs. Now, I just spoke to Cigna for over an hour, hour and a half, and I know about negotiating contracts, because I did at least six or seven in this town, and I left, it was way different than it is now. We never heard of a drug tier program. You're treating certain people differently. You're discriminating against certain people, because if those drugs are diabetic drugs or any kind of drugs like that, this city is discriminating against those people.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Green, can we, I'm sorry, can we find out exactly what Mr. Ballard just talked about?
And let me speak to that specifically with Mr. Ballard, because he knows he and I definitely go, and anytime there's a question, and more importantly than just talking, because talking to me is not important, it's more important we'll be putting writing, and we go back and forth in emails, and I also put everyone on it, which he can attest to, to find out exactly what's he talking about when he's talking about with this medical thing. We can do it again tomorrow and then we'll first put it in writing, and I want to be on the phone call when we call Susan from Cigna to see what this is, because I honestly don't know. If I don't know, I'll say it.
What drugs are in different tiers? They told me today, and I saw on the phone for hours before I got here, of all the different Cigna, telling me here's a tier level for certain drugs.
Okay.
Genetic, you'll have a regular drug, and all of a sudden, there's a tier, there's a different level of drug.
So, let's see tomorrow, with Sonia as well.
Okay. Anybody else?
Then you'll keep us.
Wants to address.
Good evening. Josephus three seventeen Rector Street. I had a question on R ninety-nine three backslash twenty-four. I just wanted to know what does this grant consist of, and I wanted to know whether or not we're going to open this up to the public input. With R one hundred dash three backslash twenty-four, I wanted to know what that consisted of, it's about half million dollars, I wanted to know whether that's going to be the hire of police officers, or is it going to be used in the actual UEZ zone, because as you know, we hired a number of police officers on grants and it's not the recurring money. I'm just curious as to how that's going to be spent and whether or not the public will have an opportunity to have input on on how this money is spent. And the last one is R one hundred dash three backslash twenty-four, which talks about, you know, cracking down on people on cell phones, distracted drivers. I want to know, is this going to be the impetus to actually enforce what we see on a regular basis all throughout the community? Right now, I think that's the job of the officers, I don't see that necessarily being enforced. I think all of us will drive down one of the main arteries of Perth Amboy, whether it be New Brunswick Avenue, Market Street, Smith Street, Bayett Street, and find double parked cars. We don't, we see some, we see officers go by these vehicles, we see cars parked on the corner, sometimes they're just double parked next to an actual empty spot, and so this goes directly to that. I'm just concerned about whether or not getting the money is actually going to give the motive motivation for the officers to actually enforce the rules. So, I have questions about those three, and then with respect to the last three, which is R one ten, one eleven, and one twelve, that all has to do with the Rent Leveling Board. I'm happy that we're getting some volunteerism to keeping that board active, that's a wonderful thing, kudos for getting people out there. I know there were a number of people that also applied, I was wondering how 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 these candidates were vetted, and whether or not, you know, they're given a reason, because we do need volunteerism in this community, and so when people are rejected or not put on boards, when they do volunteer, it's probably a reason why we don't, we're not able to fill other boards. I'm curious as to how those positions are filled. And then a more specific question is, there's been some news reported about the increase in in rent in this community. There's, you know, on a number of online sources, you could take them for what they were, there's a lot of people that speculated about real news and whether it's true, but I mean, it's been largely reported, and I think the sentiment of the community is that rents have gone up more than what is statutorily in place right now, whether it be three percent, two point five percent, or historically five percent. I'm seeing numbers of somewhere between fifteen to thirty percent. So, with respect to this, I mean, it's great that we have a board, but it is the responsibility of the city council to keep the mission of the Rent Leveling Board in place, and so if we're hearing that rents are going up fifteen to thirty percent, whether or not this board is actually doing their job of enforcing the ordinance, and so I'm just, I'm wondering whether or not this board is actually asking these questions, like the council asking these questions.
Have they presented the case to them? Whatever, you know, whoever is complaining about the rise on their rent?
Yeah, so I understand that, like you're at the mercy of who comes forward, but I also think there's an obligation on the Rent Leveling Board part to actually inform the public, whether it be like the landlords or the tenants. I've said that before in these meetings, so like, I think some of the mission has to be to inform. We have, we have a community that needs to be informed on a lot of levels, at all different types of ordinances, and that's the job of the police and, you know, city employees to do that as well. So, if you can answer any of those questions, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I could answer one about the Rent Leveling Board. I spoke personally with the chair of the Rent Leveling Board. One of my main concerns with the board was accessibility. I'm still not sure if they're only operating on Zoom or if they have moved to in-person meetings, because up to several months ago, all the meetings were just on Zoom. And that's okay if everyone has access to Wi-Fi or device where they're able to log in, but all the data shows that not everyone has the accessibility. So, that was one of my main concerns, was the, was the accessibility for our residents, and how is the public being notified that this body actually exists? So, if there's any problems that people are able to go and to address it. I have addressed members of the Rent Control, the Rent Leveling Board, and this is something that I do look into.
Ms. Pasquale, there was a question about ninety-nine, number ninety-nine. Ninety-nine and one hundred, correct?
Some of the grants are.
Yeah.
One hundred was.
So, the one that wasn't answered earlier was about the Neighborhood Preservation Plan. The funds that grant is a five-year grant. There is a five-year plan that did result, well, did have stakeholder input when we initially got that grant. Every year, we have to submit an annual grant or an annual, sorry, an annual plan with how we're going to spend the one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, but we have to pull those recommendations from the five-year plan. So, that's where the public input and the stakeholder input came from. I could share what some of those, and the disinformation is in the council packet, but I could share what the recommended programs are. So, we have money in this year's plan for parking, wayfinding signage and to redo our parking lot signs so that they match the ordinance that the council passed, where all of the parking lots have been recently renamed or so that they're all cohesive, so we're going to be redoing new signage. We have speakers for the downtown district, so there's money specific to Smith Street or the downtown area. Monies for mural project, which we've already done three with the same funding in the downtown district. We put funding for murals every year in this plan, so I know that there's been some questions about not having money for murals, so.
How much money specifically is for murals in this plan?
So, we have ten thousand dollars for a mural with a five thousand dollar match from the BID, so we have fifteen thousand dollars for one mural in the downtown district this year. That's, this is public information, obviously, but when we put out the proposal or the call for artists, we don't say how much money we have available, that way they give a fair and open proposal. We have monies for planters, as you know, we have new planters in the downtown district, we have to maintain those planters, change out the plantings in the spring and again in the fall, so we have monies allocated for that. Some funds, small monies for our food tour, which as you all know is coming up, or should know, is coming up in May, so I hope you guys purchase tickets. It's amazing, there'll be more than twenty restaurants in our downtown district participating. And that's about it, it's a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and we make it go a long way.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, I think there was a question also about number one oh one. Chief?
It was the, the tax drive. About the cop money, off duty money.
Yes. Good evening, I believe we extensively spoke about that, so I don't know if there's anything else, if not, I can go meet with the speaker himself directly, if he, I don't know if he stepped out of the room when we spoke about it, but I can do that.
You know, the boss might have stepped out of the room when.
Sure, if it's okay, I'll speak with him directly and address the issue. Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Council President, Council members. Julia Iglesias, seven twelve Columbus Circle. I do have some questions concerning R one hundred three twenty-four. As crime is a great concern for me as a resident, there have been a lot of crimes happening in my neighborhood, and so one of the things that I believe is valuable and meaningful as a community is whenever we utilize hard-working tax dollars, is that we evaluate the impact that this tax dollars is having on what it is that we are trying to do, which is make our community safer. And so I'm wondering if there's a plan to assess the impact that this grant is going to have on the urban enterprise zone. Is there a timeline where there's going to be some sort of report released to the community of the findings in how this this fund made a difference in our community? How has it made it safer for our community? I think that's valuable and it is very important for us as residents in our city to know where the funds are being invested and the impact that they're having. Also, I think that it would be valuable also if the community has an input in how it is that these funds are going to be allocated. And I understand that it is a grant and the grants have certain allocations, but within what is practical, I think that community input is a must, because we are all part of the community, we all live here, and we should all have a voice to decide what it is that we want to do and how it is that we want to make our community safer. Also, I have some questions and comments about the ordinance number two, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. So, in in simple terms, this is a plan from the administration to go over the spending limits and to create a revenue, to create a reserve fund for any future expense. And I understand that any budget has two sides, there's the revenue side and there's the expenses side. When we talk about the expenses side, we have to be conscientious of the realities facing our community. We have hard-working families, hard-working taxpayers' families living in our community. So, when we vote to give permission, and I understand that this is not being realized as yet, it is going to be realized if it is needed, it is important, it is very important that we understand the implications that exceeding the expenses will have in our community. So, I think there is a lot of questions that we need to know. Okay, if this is being realized, where is that money is going to come from? Because we know that there's two sides, there's the revenue side, so when we look at the revenue side, where is this going to come from? Are we going to later during the year, if we realize this expense, who's going to pay for it? Taxpayers, hard-working families are paying a lot of money right now. We are the highest-paying property tax in the nation. The nation average property tax is one point ten percent. Perth Amboy, two point six percent, almost two times as much. So, I think, I think it is important to act fiscally responsible, and also I understand that according to NJSA forty-eight four dash forty-five point fourteen, according to this statute, this this is subject to certain exceptions. What are some of the exceptions according to, according to this? Thank you.
Ms. Jill, I know you explained this before, but can you please?
Yes, good evening, Council. As I explained previously, the city budget, like all local unit budgets in New Jersey, are subject to two caps. One is the tax levy cap and the other is the appropriations cap. The one that is before you is an allowance under the statute whereby the appropriations cap is two per, two and a half percent. You can pass the ordinance to increase it an extra one percent to go to three and a half. And yes, the gentleman is correct that there are exceptions to the cap calculation, so there are certain things that you cannot limit your increase on under the law. For example, if you've authorized debt to be issued to pay for certain capital improvements, the increase in your debt service year over year is an exception under the statute. In addition, by law, if our pension contributions increase more than what the cap allows for, there is a portion of that that becomes an exception. So, the calculation is quite extensive, there's a workbook that's provided by the state, we have to load all of our data into it and determine what exceptions we are allowed. And I'm just going to repeat, as I said previously, the extension of the cap is a standard process that almost every municipality I know of does, and the city of Perth Amboy has done for every one of the twenty-four-plus years that I've been here, and I would venture to say probably prior to that time. It allows us to basically balance the budget within the cap provisions, and yes, the gentleman is correct that you do have to pay for the appropriations on the other side, which is the revenue side of the budget. The budget that was introduced that this cap ordinance relates to did not include a tax increase, and I believe that you were all made aware of that at the time when it was introduced.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Good evening.
You can raise it.
Been over the whole time. I'm sorry, I was, you know, I had come just to see the redevelopment plans, but as I was sitting back there, I felt the urge brewing in me to say something in response. We heard some notes about the Rent Leveling Board today, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was kind of aware of how that process had been going. Now, obviously, I'm no longer on the Rent Leveling Board, I can't speak to their operations currently. However, in reference to some of the increases and the procedures of the board, I think it's important for the public, for really anyone, to know. I think it's important for the public, for really anyone, to know uh the way that board had been structured, not only serves to the community as a whole board, but with subcommittees um specifically, specifically designated for legislative best practices to write new recommendations for ordinances, uh, bylaws and practices of the board itself, and then also the community outreach and communications. And now I mention the community outreach and communications because that is one of the greatest opportunities we have to help those individuals that are suffering from uh illegal increases. Um, one of the challenges with the board has consistently been submissions. Uh, people need to submit a complaint or some sort of notice in order for it to be heard by the board and in order for it to be addressed. Uh, we've actually sat with a number of different legal groups and lawyers and uh advocacy groups who have, I've, I've sat in front of 50 people from Make the Road talking about rent control and rent leveling. Unfortunately, you know, people have their own agendas and that pendulum swings in whatever is favorable at the time. And so even in those sessions, not a lot of submissions still come. Uh, so the greatest thing people should know is if you are facing an issue with rents that you think is improper, whether you have confirmation or not that it is violating our ordinance, you submit a notice to the board. The board will evaluate. Uh, one of those that came up not that long ago was actually about fees and charges for uh storage or parking or additional facilities that were above and beyond what the lease had originally been signed for. And part of our decision on the board was that that did in fact violate as additional rent and therefore counted as an illegal increase above and beyond the 2.53% uh permissible increase per year. Uh, we also had implemented a recommendation uh to you all about a maintenance of standard language change to ensure that similar activities were not being violated for the health hazard habitability of those rental units, ensuring that they continue to meet the same standards uh that were uh handed over during the time that that lease was signed by those residents. Uh, so again, the board itself can only operate as successfully as the rest of our community communicates that it should. Uh, there's only so many avenues to communicate what the board can support from houses of worship to tax uh, you know, uh, information went out in uh uh water tax uh uh payment forms. So there's lots of different ways to reach people, but again, unless they are influenced to submit that complaint, uh, the board cannot attest to whether or not they are in fact being uh illegally increased. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one question. Are the meetings conducted in person or just Zoom?
Oh, I'm, I'm no, as I mentioned earlier, I'm, I'm no longer on the board, so I can't actually attest to the practice.
How long has it been since you left the board?
I transitioned off the board in, at the end of December. So I believe shortly after we had discussed, I was on the call that you had mentioned where we were discussing the accessibility of the forum. Uh, one of the things that we did feel made the forum more accessible was that the recording, the, the, the meetings from Zoom allow for a call in from a cell phone. You do not have to have Wi-Fi. Um, there was almost always an effort to have some sort of translator available, as well as the recordings in whole are made available after the fact as well. So anyone can request the recording if they wanted to. And Diane Roman is here in case she wants to correct me on any of that. Yeah.
Well, Ms. Roman, if you're still the liaison, are you still the liaison or still the representative for the rent leveling board?
Members of the council, I currently serve as the secretary of the rent leveling board.
Okay, because I asked this question a couple of times this evening. Are the meetings done in person or strictly in Zoom?
The meetings are currently held via Zoom, but the board does have the option to be able to call an in-person meeting if it is requested. So, but currently they are on Zoom.
I believe this is the only board that operates that way in our municipality right now. And um I think that um, that it hinders the public for participating. I think that it would best serve the public if these meetings were in person and there were greater outreach where these people could possibly walk into a meeting as opposed to send in documents. They might not be able to access that. But if there was a certain schedule and a place where they knew they could show up and attend, that might increase the, the types of complaints that we know definitely exist. But um, yeah, I think this is the only probably board that operates this way, maybe even in the county, that is strictly on Zoom.
Well, like I said, there is that option open depending on case, case by case basis, but currently they are being held on Zoom.
How are the, the public being notified that they had this option?
The option to attend a meeting?
To, like you said, there's an option.
So when, whenever we're going to have a meeting, you know, we do need to post that accordingly based on the open public meetings guidelines. And so we post that on, you know, the newspaper. We do post accordingly based on the number of days that we're required by law to post. It's also on the city's page when you populate it. Um, it does have the agenda, the, the agenda attached to it. Um, so if anybody wants to join, um, to Mr. Kowitsky's point, you can join via Zoom currently or you can call in.
When someone is evicted, is there any investigation if someone is evicted and their rents were illegally raised and they were unable to make their rent and fell behind on their rent a couple of months? Now they're being evicted and usually we, we, we pick up the burden on that most of the time. Is there an inquiry into why they were evicted and if it was for rent, illegal rental increases? Do we do anything about that?
With all due respect, we do not have a rent controlled office. We have a rent control board. Uh, there's things that um I serve as a secretary. I'm not legal counsel. I don't have the ability to guide anybody with any like legal opinion. We do refer people to uh legal services because there are certain things that I cannot, you know, technically answer. I, I would be compromising my position in that of the board. I have to respect, I serve as a secretary. I am not a member of the board. We do have counsel that represents the rent leveling board and it would be inappropriate for me to, to, to make any.
But if a landlord is breaking the law, you don't notify the police department or the administration, especially if someone is being illegally evicted? And the burden now is being put on the administration to house that family, to, to relocate that family? What, what, how do we make this whole? What is the landlord's responsibility then? And how are we looking out for those residents?
What I can say is that we, municipal government, my office, we're not pro landlord, pro tenant, we're pro ordinance and we work with the rent leveling board and our attorney to provide us guidance. So if somebody comes to our office and they says, you know, I believe there was an illegal increase on my, you know, my apartment, then we put in writing, we send a letter to the property owner and many times, many times the landlord will contact us and says, you know, I was unaware that there is, you know, this is a new cap. Um, and then we provide them because we're here to work with landlords as we are with our tenants.
Yes, but many times the tenants, just like the landlord was unaware, many times the tenants are unaware and that they're being evicted. So, but that, but there is the illegality of them being evicted for illegal rent increases. And I was wondering if there was any communications because if we see the evidence that there was a rent increase and if we had the family in front of us being evicted.
Right.
Do we contact the law or do our, our law department to notify that this landlord illegally evicted these people? They increased the rent. We had the, the records of it.
Right, so that it would be inappropriate for, because every case is different. Once you go to court, that's a court proceeding, that's not something that we handle.
So at that moment, we're citing, we're, we're basically um defending the landlords at that point. We're not, we're basically defending the landlords with resources from the municipality. I wish we could go a step further and try to not only help the residents, but actually penalize some of these landlords that had these practices so they could stop these practices in, in our lovely community.
With all due respect, we, we don't side with anybody. I just want to make sure that you understand we are not pro tenant or pro landlord, we're pro ordinance. That's what we're guided by. And I look to the rent leveling board to make decisions whenever there is, there are certain things that the board is allowed to do based on our ordinance and there's things that are not within the scope of what we do. So to, to Mr. Kowitsky's point, we have been tabling, the rent leveling board, the subcommittee has been going out, we do go to schools, we do try to educate the community, and it's really getting the word out um about, you know, the process by which somebody can file a complaint or even a concern if they're not aware. We get many landlords that may not live in the city that contact us that they weren't aware or, and then we provide them with the information to properly guide them and, and we share with them, you know, we guide them through chapter 353, which is our rent control ordinance, so that they can know what is the procedures um, you know, to move forward.
And it's really sad that most of the time when the resident comes to complain, they're already, the case is already in court. And that's uh when they, they have to have some type of um uh legal representation for them at the, at that level. And then rent leveling board wouldn't have the proper tool to help them out. I think that's what our community is missing to understand that before we get to the court part, you should come to the rent leveling board and maybe they can guide you on how to get legal um advice or um representation and.
The rent leveling board has made presentations in front of different PTOs and different, kind of different um not-for-profit organizations. We've worked with Make the Road, so we, we've been doing some of that. Um, you know, we will continue to do that. And I know that um our, our word is always to make sure that people share the information.
Thank you.
We also share the information with our, our food pantries. We share the information with our houses of worship so that they can then, you know, share the information forward.
Yeah, I want to make a statement. You know, I'm, there's, I hear and hear and hear and hear. You know, the problem is, is that we should make the rent leveling board go meeting public. That's the problem here. You know, listen, I'm all for this and this, but there's a lot of people that don't have this or this. And these are the people that are impacted by all of this. And you know, at the end of the day, we're going to go round and round and round and talk about the same thing for the next 10 minutes. The problem is, and I know I'm going to get a phone call from, from the commissioner of the rent leveling board for this, but you know what? What's right is right. One person is causing it not to meet in public. So I think it's incumbent on the council to push them to meet in public because you're hurting the poor people that are paying those rents and being penalized. Because you know what? We've been talking about all this, letting them know, letting them know, letting them know. 15 months I've been on the board, I've heard the same thing over and over and over again. And you know what? Nobody's pushing them to meet in public. That's what needs to be done. And I know I'm getting a phone call.
And um progressive communities like your hometown Newark, like Jersey City, are providing legal representation for these cases, especially because of the eviction epidemic after COVID. They're being proactive to help their residents, to help their residents remain in their community, especially when landlords are illegally pushing out these residents. Those communities have used some of their ARPA funds and have dug within their own pockets to provide these services for their, for their residents, to make sure that we're not uh displacing people at the expense of our taxpayers.
I just wanted to make sure that um if you um leave chapter 353, the board doesn't address, it doesn't stipulate anything regarding addressing evictions. It addresses illegal rent increases and maintenance of standards issue. That's what the resolution speaks of. Now, that's something that needs to be modified and it's done not by the rent, there are certain things that the rent leveling board cannot do. They cannot change the ordinance. We make recommend, the board will make recommendations to the governing body to make adjustments, but they, they could make suggestions um through subcommittee, but they can't change some of those things. And we don't deal with illegal rent increase, I mean, um, evictions. It's really, you know, certain things that the board has the power to do.
Director, Director Roman, you do an outstanding job and this is no reflection on you. You know, I think the real issue here is the fact that the rent leveling board won't budge on meeting in public. And you know, and regardless of what you just said, and, and, and you're touching all the right points as far as what the authority is, but at the end of the day, you know, if they don't meet in public, the less people hear about it. And you know, and at the end of the day, like I said, this is no reflection on you. You're doing your best that you can. So I don't want you to think that, you know, there's any kind of attack on you.
Oh, no, I don't take things personal. No, I don't. I, I've been here enough and I'm here to serve the public, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a two-second comment, not a, not a question. So you're good. Thank you as well for everything that you do. I think moving forward solution base, I know a question was mentioned earlier, what are our tactics to reach out to them? Maybe they can have a presentation, we can work together. Um, since they do have somebody who translates a PowerPoint in English and Spanish, what is it that they do? And since a lot of people do utilize the mayor's page and the city of Perth Amboy, maybe we, and as council members, we can help move that forward, that presentation forward so that way and fill these vacancies. We can, most of us have, all of us have social media or texting friends to say what, there's a lot of vacant positions as I see, if this is accurate, I do see four. So maybe we should have more dialogue with the specific board members from the rent leveling board. Um, a presentation here since we do have um a lot of, well, we should have more, but we do have people from our community and constituents to come. So I think moving forward, we should just focus on solution based. Um, the truth is many people don't know what can we do to work together to address this instead of going back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Public portion?
Good evening, Madam President, members, esteemed members of the council, Ken Gonzalez, 110 High Street. I actually wasn't going to say anything this evening, uh, but you got into a really interesting animated discussion about housing and with regards to e- evictions and illegal rent increases. I'll just comment very quickly. Number one, you know, right on State Street, we have Middlesex County Legal Services. That particular office specifically focuses on representing people who are indigent, who have need for legal representation specifically as to tenancy issues. So they're available. And obviously you may want to communicate with them to see if they can better advertise their services, but they are great resources to the people of Perth Amboy because they're physically located in the heart of Perth Amboy. And that's no coincidence because there's a recognition that those are people who are unfortunately in dire need of the services. So it's there. The second thing I wanted to comment upon was the issue of um the rent leveling board meeting via Zoom. I do have to agree with the statements been made today. That seems like an unusual practice. I do think that because the very nature of the people who are being assisted, they often don't have a lot of income, they often don't have access to the same technology that some of us here may have the opportunity to enjoy. I think that really is a horrible detriment to the accomplishing the point of the rent leveling board. Um, I really think it behooves the council to consider perhaps sending a letter expressing your concern directly to the chairperson of that committee. Um, and then good old fashioned politicking, you talk to someone who's on the committee and say, hey, I want to put a motion that we have. And I would be shocked that the majority wouldn't want to support the idea of going into live meetings because that's what's going to benefit the people of Perth Amboy. Last comment I'm going to make, you might remember at my last meeting that I was here, I made some comments to the board about demeanor. Wow, I don't know if it was just coincidence, you guys were awesome today. You were very well spoken compared to previous meetings. Uh, all of you were vocal. I thought that you were poised, so I'll just throw that at you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public. Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, I need a motion.
Now, I need to say something. I, I don't know if Director Lozado is still here, because I want to ask this on camera. Did he leave? Yeah, what else is new? I want to ask the BA and the, and the city attorney a question. Is there an, there's an ordinance that prohibits commercial vehicles parked on residential property, is that correct?
Believe so, yes.
All right, because right now we have at least four bus depots in the city in residential areas, right? There's one on Jefferson, there's one on Neville Street, there's one on Carlock Avenue, and there's one on Meredith Street, the where the one summons was issued, Mr. Green? Well, guess what? It didn't work. Now, according to the ordinance, tell me if I'm right or wrong, they get it, they get it summons for every day that they're in violation, is that correct? Okay, that's that. I wanted really a definition of illegal housing. That's what I'm looking for. Can we tell the public what the definition of illegal housing is? Because I think when you get a C of O, when you agree to buy the house, you, you sign off and say you're not going to have anybody live. off and say you're not going to have anybody living in the attic or the basement. Right? Is that correct? I, I know recently buying a house in Perth Amboy, I had to sign off on that, that I wouldn't have anybody living in the basement.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, Perth Amboy is among many municipalities that, that have that certification when you get the CFO, that you sign off, that you, you know the rules and you, you agree to abide by them. As far as the definition, I, I don't think illegal housing is a defined term in our ordinance. I think there are, you know, when a, when a CFO is issued, it's issued for a particular use, for a specific house. If, if it's, if there's housing that violates the CFO, that is illegal housing. But it's, there's a lot of different things that encompass illegal housing.
All right, well, you know, my, my point I'm making is, is that if I just name four places where I find buses from different bus companies parked on, on a residential area, and obviously, and they're all controlled by, there's cameras that say this place is being watched, evidently the landlord or the property owner is getting money for those buses to park there. Now, I've been talking about this for 15 months, right? And nothing happens. And, you know, and as far as illegal housing is concerned, it sort of goes back into the rent control thing. These people that are renting these rooms and basements and attics live in squalor. You know what a waste bucket is? It's human waste. And this is how these people live. Nobody seems to really, and in the year 2023, 46 summonses were issued for illegal housing. I know, because I got the work right here in my hand. And you know what? I wish I had a dollar for every time I'm getting my chops busted by the public on illegal housing and I get laughed at. You know? And Mr. Green, not to blow you up on this, but you are a witness. You saw it yourself. And a summons was issued. Now, it doesn't tell us the, what the disposition is on those summonses. So I don't know what happens. You know, and at the end of the day, this is no longer a joke. There are, you know, everybody talks about this on social media. You know, and at the end of the day, and when we talk about rent control, what about those poor people that are living in squalor in the basement and are paying $300 a week, $1,200 a month? What about their rights? So you know what? As long as I'm here, which is I don't know how many more months that's going to be in my health, holds out, every month I'm going to talk about illegal housing. And you know what? Next I'm going to go out and I'm going to take the pictures of the illegal bus depots and we're going to show them up here on the screen. Because you know what? They're there. It's not, and it's a joke already. You know, really, we didn't get elected to come up here and be punching bags when we're, you know, for 40 years I worked for the city of Perth Amboy and the citizens expected me to do my job. And I did it every single day. You know? Mr. Green, it was your invention to bring the KPIs. And I've been looking at them. So, and I think that 46 summonses were issued. I really want to know what the disposition was on the 46 summonses. I mean, I've been told that people get warnings and then nothing happens and they're still there. And I'm not even bringing up the four buildings where I saw the stop work order are going on seven months now. Stop work orders on buildings. According to the building codes, if there's a stop work order on a residence, the people have to vacate the residence. Something happens to anybody in those homes, that is on us. So you know what? I got elected to represent the people and the people are speaking through me. And I ain't going to stop until I see something change. It's not funny, Mr. Green.
I know what you're saying, funny. I think we need to tone it down because I'm not laughing.
Because I pointed, when I pointed that out to you at Sadowski and Meredith and you went and saw for yourself.
Right, I saw, I saw.
And, because everybody made me feel like I was lying, that it didn't happen. Excuse me. But I'm telling you now, in front of everybody, that it's still going on. All those buses are still there. So when it is bus depots catches on fire and somebody gets hurt, then what are we going to do? Because, and you know, and, and that illegal area out there on Outer State Street where all those junk cars are, I thought they were supposed to vacate. Now, the, the fire chief left. He normally knows all about that stuff.
Right, he wrote a summons for that too. And I just want to touch upon the housing issue. Because the council, we had four from here for, and I like to call it unsafe housing because basically that regulates our residents into unsafe conditions and our fire department and neighbors and the whole community just makes it unsafe. One of the best things this administration did was it hired the government strategy to create this report when this administration first took over the reins of the city. I pulled out the recommendations from that report. We laid it out. The, the recommendations are laid out, we paid for it. This is something the administration has asked for. Within the report, it states that our number one problem in this community is the unsafe housing issue. Yet, the administration refuses to move forward on those recommendations. Some of them are my recommendations, some of those are the recommendations from the, the report itself, which was compiled by the employees. But yet we refuse to move forward with these recommendations to address this issue. There has been nothing done to really address this issue, just been a whole lot of lip service coming from the, the, coming from the residents, coming from the council, trying to address this issue, but we need movement from the administration to make any change happen because that's what they ran on. Change. We're looking for the change. We're looking for safer conditions. We're looking to address this number one issue of unsafe housing. And we have all of the tools and all of the recommendations of how to address it. We just need to move on it. But the council can't really move on it. The administration has to move on it.
Thank you. I need a motion to go to closed session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to close session. When we come back, the meeting will start. Thank you. I need a motion to return from closed session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is the March 13, 2024 council meeting. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milea Di Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the Council Chamber, City Hall, 260 High Street. And the council meeting will follow right after the caucus and closed session. And it's right now 8:34. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Councilman Torres?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, please watch over this governing body for the, to make our decision fair to all the residents and everyone who, who lives in this, in this city. Also, I want to pray for those troops that are abroad and also the ones that are depending on freedom here in, in our nation. Please protect all our children, protect those that are in need and especially the mental, people who have mental issues. Please provide us with the right tools to help them and to guide them. And with that, I say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all. Okay, today we had the presentation. Those two presentations were done. Now we go to the ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speakers per ordinance. Ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy authorizing a one-year lease agreement with Easter Seals of New Jersey for office space in the Alexander F. Jankowski Community Center for non-monetary consideration pursuant to NJSA 40A, Column 12, dash 14, to be used for a public purpose commencing January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who wants to speak on this ordinance? Anyone? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the public session.
Move.
Sorry. Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Number two, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 40A, Column 4, dash 45, dot 14. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's open to the public to speak on the ordinance, number two. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President Tejeda?
Agenda, a public comment. Citizens may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's open to the public for agenda item only. Yes.
I just forgot, Joseph Ross, 317 Rector Street. I just forgot to ask a question during the caucus about the vacancies. I just wanted to know, and I, I think I mentioned it, what's the process for filling the vacancies? Like who, who decides, who gets a board seat and who doesn't? And then I, I want to know, is there any restrictions as to like city employees serving on certain boards?
Uh, it's advising consent, so they're appointments by the mayor with consent of the council.
But if they're city employee, can they serve on the board? Because I understand, I know that there's some ex facto, you know, like council members that are allowed to serve on certain boards, but like whether or not that creates like a conflict, if they're a city employee also serving on a board, you know, who, you receive a paycheck from the city.
Yeah, I, I know for, for example, Para, they only allow two officers or employees of the city. I will look at the rent leveling board ordinance, I'll let you know. Just give me five minutes.
That's fine. And then the other thing I was going to ask, are any of the people who are being proposed, are they city employees? Because I thought maybe one of them was, I was just curious whether or not, the public should know that.
For the rent leveling?
For the rent leveling, yeah, I didn't know. I'm not saying there is, I'm just asking.
Alma works for the city?
Alma does, right? Okay, where does she work? What department? I think it's, I think it's relevant, you know, that people should know what their interests are.
DPW, yeah.
DPW?
DPW, yeah.
Okay. And I think, uh, that was it, so just the process for filling vacancies. And you're going to check on whether they can serve on that board, whether that creates any conflict. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on agenda item? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports GLOA Goldie CFO Controller submitted a copy of the post-sale memorandum regarding the bond sale provided by GB Associates LLC, the city's financial advisor. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance amending Chapter 432, inclusionary zoning of the city code requiring all applicable developments to include a mandatory onsite affordable housing set aside. I need a motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Number two, an ordinance to amend, an ordinance entitled Records. Ordinance number 621-92, adopted August 4, 1992, as amended by ordinance number 1944-2020, adopted May 27, 2020, also known as Chapter 425, Sec. of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is with the amendment that were discussed during the caucus meeting. I need a motion.
Madam President, before, uh, Mr. Opal, if we were going to the one tow company that's outside the ordinance?
No, but that's not part of that.
No?
No, that's not part of the ordinance.
The, the applications that were submitted to council, um, those will be approved through a separate resolution at a later.
I need a motion.
Second.
And just confirming, this is what was proposed today, not what's currently on the packet.
What you're voting on is the, the change, the version with the changes that we made in caucus that we put on the record there.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
I need to explain my vote. I know I was in favor of what was presented for the, for the ordinance. I think the changes that were made, I'm not in favor of that. I know that we spoke about, a lot about how the towers have, everything had gone up for them, but we also have to consider the residents. Everything had gone up for the residents and adding more charges or fees to it, that's the, that's the part that I'm not in, in favor of. So my vote is no. And please look through the resolution and just pull whatever you want to. Well, just remember that 109 is out. 109 is out.
At 97?
Anything else? You okay?
Yep.
All right, the resolution for the consent agenda is R95324 through, through R96324, R98324, R101324 through, or 8324, R110 through 112324. And that's the consent agenda. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. R97324, authorizing change order number one to the contract with T and M. R97324, authorizing change order number one to the contract with T&amp;M Associates for professional engineering services for Sunshine Alley Improvement in the amount of $3,500. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. R99324, accepting the Neighborhood Preservation Program, NPP, year four strategy, strategy implementation plan for, um, $125,000. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. R10324, authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for Urban Enterprise Zone Assistance Funds for Public Safety's purposes in the Urban Enterprise Zone Program in the amount not to exceed $500,820 with 75 cents for fiscal year 2024. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. R113324, authorizing emergency temporary appropriation to extend the calendar year 2024 temporary budget in the amount of $29,000. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes.
Council President, if I may, I'm sorry, just to close the loop on that question, the only, uh, with regard to the composition of the rent leveling board, the only prohibition is that the chair cannot be an employee or an elected official, um, there's no cap on the specific numbers like there is with some other boards.
Thank you.
I have a question, as an elected official, um, meaning just for, hmm, can they be elected for a party or no?
No, no, just? Specify said member shall not hold any elective office or position.
Okay. But I think, uh, his question was if he was a employee.
Any employees on any board.
I would, like it says elective office or position, I, I would interpret position maybe to include, um, a public employee, but, um, it's kind of, it's not clear, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Public portion, I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is about anything, not just the agenda.
Josephus, 317 Retro Street, I would be remiss if I don't bring up Jose Espia again this evening, I have to. You know, Mr. Puccio said this evening that he had a job for 30 years and he did his job. And I look at that video of Officer Cruz, and I think we can all agree that he did his job. Um, there were some comments last time, because I, I guess it was perceived that I was accusing the council of not doing anything, uh, but the reality is that you guys are the checks and balances in this government, and you guys do have certain powers, and you guys act as a body, um, and that includes, you know, you guys could subpoena or you could request Mr. Espia to come to this meeting and to answer questions as a city employee. He can elect to either speak to you guys in public or in private, so I don't know if that's something that's been done, um, so that's something you guys could be doing if this is a real true concern, because I think it sends the wrong message to other city employees that, you know, certain people are above the fray because of politics, and, and it lowers the morale of the whole entire staff here if you allow that, and it goes to a lot of what Mr. Puccio was talking about with illegal housing, is that if you, if you allow it, like if you say, well, it's okay for this one or for that one, then it becomes cancer, and then it becomes everywhere. And I would suggest, and I don't want to make any accusations, but my understanding from conversations that I've had, there are other, uh, city employees who are having issues with doing illegal work in their houses without permits. Um, I don't know if that's been talked about in closed session, but I would say that that is symptomatic if you allow these kind of things to occur over and over again. And so, the other thing that could be done, um, I don't know if, um, the city council has appointed Mayor Kaba formally to be the police director, or if he's just become the police director of the facto, because every single director has to be approved by the city council, because I understand it. I mean, I'll let Mr. Opel, he is counsel to the, to, to the council, um, so he can confirm that, but my understanding is that if you hold those kind of positions, you have to be confirmed by the council. Now, it can't be unreasonably withheld, but certainly, given the fact that Mr. Kaba holds himself out as the director, right, and he oversees that department, you guys have the ability to have Mr. Kaba come in and talk about one violent crime in this community, right, because it, it's something that's happening every day, you see it on Facebook, you say you check Facebook, but also, he could be accountable to the public and say what it is that maybe Mr. Cruz or Officer Cruz did or didn't do during that, uh, during that arrest, right? He could also speak to what the officers did or didn't do when Mr. Espia hit three cars on Market Street, making a left-hand turn, Prospect Auto Body, Rayfort Angelo's place over there, he ran into three cars. Now, were they double parked, whatever, but like, we're always have to be defensive driving, right, that's, that's the rule of thumb. And the officers didn't even conduct a field sobriety test on Mr. Espia, he allowed his daughter to come down to speak on his behalf, and during the completion of the accident report, Mr. Espia removes his personal items from between his legs, and he starts urinating while giving a statement to the police officers about what had transpired, and at no point did the police officer say, hey, this guy just hit three cars, he's urinating right in front of me, he's belligerent, if you saw the video, I put it up last, I don't know if you were here, they never even do a field sobriety test, nor did they even give a careless driving. Rule 101, if you hit anybody from behind, you get a careless driving ticket. Am I wrong? And, and nothing's been done, I mean, this sends the wrong message that absolute power corrupts absolutely, and if he's that important, then tell me, why is it that he's not being held to the same standards as everybody else? He's, he's allowed to do whatever he wants. It's scary, because this town is a very intense town to drive in, for lack of a better word. I think we've all driven into this community, you know, we gotta dodge vehicles, go around, double park vehicles, kids popping out, human beings popping out in between cars across the street, that could have been a child. I mean, I mean, I know that the, the impression here is that this is political, but the reality is that that could have been anybody's kid, that could have been a human being, and we're not holding Mr. Espia to that standard, which is a safe community, where we care about quality of life, we talk about quality of life. He was cold there on loud music, and refused to lower the music. So, if you want to be about it, then be about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council comments, uh, Councilwoman Cruz?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for being here and sharing your concerns, suggestions. Um, we do hope to see you, as we said there, on Sunday, um, celebrating for St. Patrick's, and, um, thank you to the Hyberians, and congratulations on your anniversary, as well, thank you to the volunteers as well who put in their work to survey our residents, and that's, that's a first step. As, um, mentioned, that's just one of the many steps to really work together at addressing a lot of these concerns, um, they're a lot deeper than that, and, um, that's pretty much it, thank you as well, and have a good evening.
Councilwoman Morales?
Thank you, everyone that was here today to participate, and, um, it's always great to hear everybody's comments and, um, you know, uh, you know, contributions to, you know, their, their opinions, and, um, we always appreciate that. Um, congratulations to the, um, ancient order of Hyber, uh, Hyberians, uh, you know, 75 years, a very long time, congratulations to them. Um, I happened to attend the PBS, um, viewing show of yesterday's, um, travels with Dar, Dar, Darley, I think it was, and in New Brunswick, and got to see that video, and it really showcased Perthamboy, um, actually Middlesex County and several other towns in, in Middlesex County, Somerset, New Brunswick, um, and we were, of course, one of them, and it was really nice to see, and they're gonna be airing this, I think sometime next week, so I hope you all get to see it, and, you know, getting to, you know, expose really the rich history of our cities is beautiful, um, and what, what it's all about. Um, what else? Um, I also, last week, we had to, uh, participate in the Read Across America, it was very fun, I, I actually read in the dual-language school last week, that was really enjoyable with, with the, you know, engaging with the, the children. And, um, just wanna mention about some upcoming events, uh, there are a lot of things going on, we will be having the flag raising this Sunday, and anyone who is celebrating St. Patrick's Day, enjoy the St. Patrick's Day, I hear it's gonna be very nice. And speaking of the weather, we do have a lot of things going on, and now the street paving is commencing once again, which is, we, we do have to commend, um, you know, the city administration and, and, um, you know, for getting that done, and, um, and pretty much, that's about it for now. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Puccio?
Very good, Madam President. I really try to make it quick and short, I'll just say this. You know, I, I alluded to the 30 years of me doing my job. One of the, one of about being a police officer is enforcing the law will save your job. When you look the other way, that's how you lose your job. And, you know, of course, we can't comment on anything on personnel, so I can only comment in general about, about, you know, what, what happens when you're a police officer. And, you know, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, you do no one any favors, because you know what? You will end up sometimes holding that leaky bag in your hand, because you think you're doing somebody a favor by not doing your job. And unfortunately, you know, back when, in the young days, when I was a young police officer and nobody had cameras in their hands, police got away with a lot of stupid things. Today, you can't get away with anything, because you end up being a, a, a two-minute video on, headlining the news, you know, and this is what people don't really understand about being a police officer, you have a choice. And at the end of the day, it goes from the last guy in the police department all the way to the top, and at the end of the day, everybody needs to do their job. And, you know what? If you don't do your job, you leave yourself open, and, you know, not anybody's punching back, but unfortunately, my hands are tied, but I can shoot my mouth off a little bit. And all I'm saying is, at the end of the day, everybody should be doing their job. And, you know what? If you don't think you can do the job, go somewhere else. But at the end of the day, there isn't a set of laws for the people on the A-list and a set of laws for people on the B-list, there should be no list. You break the law, there's punishment. If not, get another job, you know? And like I said, I can't really go too far in my comments, but others would say that sometimes it's rough sitting up here and having to keep my mouth shut.
Thank you. Councilman Torres?
Keep in mind, quick, um, I look forward to reading the New Jersey State COVID response report, because I think this is gonna give us insight to, um, how we, how as a city, we can improve our response also, and it's gonna, you know, um, I'll be able to compare and contrast that report to how some things were handled in our municipality. I've seen in the past, we've allocated money to have, um, reports conducted, and I think this is something very important, that maybe the council should put into place, um, you know, a referendum where we will hire an outside agency to conduct an investigation on our response, and to see if this administration was responsible on its response, and to see if we are prepared for this type of disaster if it ever occurred again, to see where we're at, any type of, um, um, response plan. Um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for all, everyone who participated tonight, it is, it is good for the community to have this engagement of opinions of every, uh, everyone, the public and, and the city council. I want to, um, thanks everyone who was here today. I also want to say, uh, happy St. Patrick's Day to all of, to everybody who celebrates, and also for us who are not Irish, we also celebrate, uh, because that day, we all are Irish. Um, I invite you to come to the flag raising on Sunday, and I'm looking forward to see everybody there. Um, also, um, there's a lot of, um, different, uh, events happening during, during this time in the city, just follow our, you know, the media and everything of where it's being posted, and I invite everybody to participate. And with that, I say good night, thank you very much. I need a motion to close?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.